This meeting is held to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board's Secretary. Irene, please call us to order.
Tuesday, October 8th, 2019, 7:09 PM. Christopher Abelloni.
Here.
Russell Lewis. Daniel Harris.
Here.
Eric Alvin.
Here.
Brittany Ashner.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Here.
Tim Flick.
Here.
Alright, so as the first order of business, a little small housekeeping issue. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2019.
I'll second.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And before we get started on the advanced development, I just wanna call to the attention that Christopher Gonzalez had to hear one of the recordings of one of the meetings. Which particular meeting was it, Jack?
Uh, October of 2018.
So we're gonna put it on the record that he has listened to the recording? And that we have a full seven members to hear this application?
Yeah, our two new members have listened to all the recordings of the project. And we have certifications and put them to the record. And we have copies for council for the application as well. And I'll go back to last year's records and see if there's already a certification for Christopher Gonzalez. If it is fine, if there is an update or written one done during the next meeting. We have a suggestion here, Chris, if you'd like to have listened to the October 2018 meeting, at which time this application is initially heard. So we have a full seven members qualified to listen and decide the application.
And if anyone is here on 507 Bond. And I'm sorry if you are here this evening, but the application is not being heard.
Oh, the 507 Bond Street application is actually going to be heard in a later date.
Yes, and you'll be noticed.
It will be noticed again. Alright, advanced development, Mr. Smoes.
Yes, sir.
It's been quite a while, but here we are again.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good evening. My name is Faes Simoes. I'm appearing behalf of this application. And we're ready to proceed. As the board is quite familiar with this application, we believe that the only testimony that's left is the architect due to the changes that were made. And I am the architect and the planner. So first, I'm gonna call my architect to testify. And for the new board members and the board, as a re-statement, we have been here, I believe, three times.
I can say maybe four times, Mr. Smoes.
Four times, yes, there you are. Actually, the fourth, the last time you were here, very.
It was not.
Nothing happened.
Correct.
The three meetings are substantial. It's for October 18th, meeting in March, and a meeting in April.
And then maybe we didn't. The, so we, based on the previous presentation, we made the substantial changes to the, to our project. And we reduced the number of units to 17. And we are ready to proceed. I would like to call my architect, Mr. Neta. I don't know if you need to swear. I believe you should swear.
Yeah, let's swear everybody again since it's a timeline.
I know, this is the technology, isn't it?
Yes.
I didn't know, otherwise we would have provided the drive.
Irene should have the digital format, right?
Yes.
It's real, good luck.
And it's just two, just two persons. Everybody's plans from 5:20 AM.
Yes.
You swear upon the testimony that these proceedings will be the truth, level two, and not be just two?
I do.
State your name for the records about your last name.
Nicholas J. Neta, N-T-T-A.
Thank you.
Ms. Neta, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And you've testified before this board in the past?
Yes, I have.
And you've testified before other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
And is your license current?
Yes, it is.
And you're familiar with this application?
Yes, I am.
And with plans, any who are involved in the preparation of saying?
Yes, I am.
I ask that Mr. Neta be accepted as an expert?
As in the past, yes.
So I'll just quickly go over the modifications that were made since the last time we were here. Essentially, the biggest change, listening to the board and to the comments from the public, was to reduce the floor. So the building went from five stories down to four stories. Put up A101, probably.
GPS signal lost.
Damn. So the biggest modification was removing the fifth story and essentially condensing the building down to four stories. The density remained the same at 17 units. Some of the amenities space on the second and third floor was removed to capture the additional units. And the only amenities space left on the building would be the rooftop garden. Parking, based on the previous application, the original lower level of the garage had an exit and an entrance. This pushes it to one singular entrance and exit into the building. Again, all of the parking spaces, except for the handicap parking space, are fitted with a lift. I know there was a question on the type of the lift that is gonna be used, so we brought information so the board can see. I don't know if it was part of the electronic application that was submitted.
Michelle, why don't we start with A14?
Alright, start right with A14.
A14? Both of them, or there's two?
Alright, A14.
A14, fifteen?
I'll mark the lift as A14.
Okay.
So A14 is not in your plan set, but essentially what that is, is it outlines the type of lift, the cycle of the lift. It's essentially 30 seconds per cycle. So if you're removing a car and you're lowering the other car, it takes approximately 30 seconds for the whole system to cycle. It is push-button. Each individual unit has its own control. Typically, the, you know, each of the unit owners would be assigned one space with the lift in place. They would work out, you know, who would be on top, who would be on the bottom. Essentially, if there's two cars, one car would pull out, cycle this car down, leave, and then pull the other car in. If it was one car, the unit would stay on the ground and you could physically mark on it. So it's a very quick operation. It's very convenient. They're all individual units.
Head south toward New Jersey 71 South Main Street.
Come and go as they please.
Have you used this lift before in some of your?
Yes, yes, we use this on multiple projects. It's a very similar type of system. I don't know if it's the same type of system which you specified, but individual systems work the best so you're not removing a whole row of cars or having a unit which is programmed that moves cars around. This is very, for a building like this, this is the simplest and easiest operation.
So how many parking spaces do we have?
We have a total number of parking spaces, as you can see on the bug, we have 17. Out of the 17, 16 are fitted with the parking system. The handicap space obviously is not.
Okay, go ahead.
Just again, going back to the height.
And with these, with this system, are the cars able to maneuver out of the parking spaces and, you know, exit or enter?
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, the width of the parking aisle at the narrowest end is 24 feet. 24 feet is standard in any 90-degree parking. That's a standard two-way aisle. The aisle between the main parking area, which would be here, is probably closer to 35 feet. So it's an over-size for the operator.
Okay, go ahead.
So just going again back to the physical height of the building, again, it was dropped from five stories to four stories. This, we should mark it correct.
I believe we should. Let's mark that A16.
That would be 16.
16?
If it was your first one was the new floor plans.
Yes.
So that's, you already made the lift A14. So make the floor plans.
This would be A15.
No, no, make the floor plans A15, and this rendering A16.
Jim, can you specify on floor plans or dated?
Yes.
So what is the date of the floor plans, Nick?
The revised is 5/17/19.
Go ahead.
So this depicts the new rendering of the building. As you can see, the building got substantially lower. The FAR from the original application was over four. Now we're down just around two with the SAR. And another shop, which would be A17, kinda puts in context the building to the neighboring church and the building behind it. So it falls more in line. It's actually the tower here to give you access to the roof is now lower than the steeple. I believe it shrunk the building down and brought it more in context to the neighboring structure.
What is the height of the building?
Where do you get? 201. Revised height of the buildings, the main part of the building would be 45 foot. Overall height of the tower is 57 foot, two inches. So the top of the roof, top of the roof line is 45 feet.
Okay, go ahead.
That's it, basically shows the change.
The apartments that, the 17 apartments, the mix, could you tell us what the mix is? You referring to A15?
Correct. A15, which is A101 in your plan set, has a unit breakdown. So out of the total of 17 units, we have nine, two bedrooms, six one-bedrooms, and two studios.
The, could you tell us what the materials that we're using for the outside of the building?
Yeah, the exterior of the building, the lower level is brick to match the neighboring structure, which is the Red Brick Church, which, go back here. We can look at a couple of elements we're taking from here and the surrounding area. It's gonna be either board-on-board siding or hardy plank siding, asphalted shingle for the roof, painted, tainted white, powder-coated white lovers screening the parking. And then you can see there's ample landscaping to go around and kinda screen everything wrapping around the project. The main entrance highlighted by an entrance canopy, which will most likely be an aluminum canopy. The color scheme and a lot of the elements came from the church.
I have no other questions.
Anyone from the board for any questions for Mr. Neta and his testimony? Or professionals?
So are we gonna get any other testimony about the operation of the parking?
No, Ms. Neta is here.
I can comment on the units we've used in probably 25 buildings.
So each individual, if it's a homeowner or tenant, is gonna operate the lift for their particular vehicle?
Yes, it's, what's nice about the system is that each parking slot has its own unit.
Well, there's 17 units, and there's only 16 stacked spaces.
We can't put it with a handicap space.
I get it, but who draws the short straw of being stacked?
There's whoever is gonna have the handicap space.
Well, it has to be whoever's handicap gets the handicap space.
Exactly.
So there's a potential that one of the stack stalls is shared between two different units?
No, there is not. Each unit will be assigned a slot in parking space. If no one needs, we need the handicap space, so potentially, you know, there's gonna be the shortage if nobody needs the handicap space of one parking space. But to me, RSI is for a studio, you really have the space for it.
So each unit owner goes in, pushes the button, is it there? The button, whatever. So if I live in the building and I have two vehicles, my husband came home after I did, so my car's in the air, his car's down, I'm leaving before him. So I have to move his car to get my car down, and then move his car back into the space where we're living.
If it happens, I guess.
But each unit is allocated the two parking spaces, one above the other?
Except for.
Except for the handicap, which would most likely be.
I mean, you can probably rent a bit of handicap space with a lift and you make wider lifts such a possibility.
Well, I potentially see the problem where if that's not an assigned space and it's a guest, so say someone with a wheelchair comes to visit somebody, they use that handicap space, they need access to that handicap space, you know, that kinda disrupts the rhythm of, you know.
Well, the handicap space, the handicap space in.
If it becomes a stacked space, then how do you move that guy's car to get the stacked car out? You know, there's no attendant.
Yeah, and each, there's no attendant, there's no attendant. Each unit gets a stacked space. There's no mixing of spaces where an attendant would be needed. It's a very simple system. If you pull into space number three, and you're first in, your car goes up. If you're second in, your car is down. If you need to get out first and you're up in the air, you pull a lower car out. You hit the button, 30 seconds later, your car's on the ground, you pull it out, you pull the other one in.
But I think what Donna was getting at was if there's a guest coming in as a handicap guest, coming in and using that space.
If there is a, if there is a handicapped person coming, they would have, if there are guests, the building doesn't have sufficient, inside, there's not guest parking.
So I think that's the issue.
So the handicap space is an assigned space?
The handicap space would be an assigned space. If it's no handicap person, then it would be an assigned handicap space. Or be left, then you would have to park one car on the street.
Excuse me. There's abundance of handicap stickers and plates in New Jersey. What if we have more than one resident apply for an apartment with a handicap sticker? Are you prepared to pull out one of the racks and put another handicap space in there?
The number of handicap spaces for the size of the parking lot is governed by accordance by code. We need the code for the handicap spaces. If there's an additional handicap space, I'm sure they can apply for something on the street for a handicap parking space.
But you haven't applied for it. You're not gonna have any handicap spots in front of the building?
We didn't count any street from parking. I mean, if we are, based on RSI's eligible account, street from parking spaces in front of our building, we have not.
That would have to be positioned before the castle.
I think it's individual. I think that.
That's a different situation.
I don't think the owner is authorized to do that. I think it's the car owner.
The tenant can do that.
The tenant.
Correct.
Okay, so non-attendant operated system, each unit gets an assigned stacked space. And it's a 30-second cycle for the machinery to do a stack.
Yeah, I brought a copy of the submitted.
It's basically a remote control kind of.
So it's the floor on the bottom is out, and wherever it happens to go temporarily.
Let's get Michelle.
Oh, gosh, it's my turn.
Do you swear upon the testimony that these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and not be just two?
I do.
The new affiliate in the city.
Don Miller, board plan. So, I'm sorry, so. So if it's two vehicles, one stacked, one at ground level, you have to move that ground level car out to somewhere in order to get your stacked car down, and then put that car somewhere and move the other car back in. Okay. Can we, can we, I'm sorry, Irene, can you go back to the council plan layout of the parking spaces? Um, so. May not be that big a deal if you're in that back part of the parking area, but if you're in that sort of stacked area, that'd get a little dicey. I'm gonna ask the board engineer to maybe comment on how to function, backing out of that last space against the curb line, some of the, certain, going to, normally we ask for a, and a head or radius offset five foot, whatever.
Do you swear upon the testimony that these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth?
I do, Jason Fisher, board engineer. We had made a comment in previous review letter asking for analysis of attorney's consent and out of the parking spaces. And that was provided, I don't think, I was just checking in the file, I don't think attorney 's consent was provided for that last parking space, it was provided for the one before it. And the function, it's tight, it's tough, it's just like any other similar type of building, but it functions. But we didn't see one for the last space, the rest of the space in the cloud. I was gonna ask the question, if there is some room between that space and what appears to be the exterior wall of the building, how much room is there if there's room to provide a handicap?
You can provide it, and I don't believe that we would have an issue providing it. It's just the way it's shown now, it's shown as a straight curve, but a yes or back in can be provided. Believe that by scale, and I'm guessing what it is, it's probably around three foot. So you could give a one and a half to two-foot indentation into the curb line.
Is that, what's up on the screen right there, beyond, going to the top of the parking layout, you have the exterior wall of the building. Is the line beyond that the property line?
Yeah, the building is set off.
Yeah, there is property line.
Yes, the property line is not, so there is a substantial amount of space.
So another thing that might be considered there is opening that up, not for a driveway, but maybe for another couple feet there to help the cars maneuver. I don't know if that's something that would be desired, but it jumps off the page to me as a space that may be available, would help those cars move in and out.
It could, it could be, yeah. And I think we would comply with your comments.
Okay, so just to clarify, we're saying that in order for those spaces to function properly, you need more room? Will it fit?
Yeah, you could, you could, it's, we're looking at a distance here of 24 feet. If you were here, you were backing out, you could physically back your car out and move it without turning. I understand that, but you could back this car out and turn. You have 24 feet.
That last space, I think is gonna be tough to get both in and out of. Maybe it could be done by some people or some cars, but if we had, I'd say, at least three feet for a hammerhead?
We would comply and put the hammer in.
Five feet ideally, three feet, I would say at least.
So for the board members, what we're saying is that we're probably going to need for them to modify that wall to allow for part of the parking area to extend beyond that building line. So there's that sidewalk that runs on the side of the building that goes to where trash is, and then beyond that would be a little area of the parking area so that they would have access for vehicles to safely adequately back out without hitting the building. So just to give you a sense of what we're saying they would need to do to make that last space function.
Thank you, Donna.
Hi. So we have a question about whether there's really two handicap spaces technically required under AED, or is this very?
Yeah, I think, tell me if you have a different opinion on this. I believe between 26 and 50 parking spaces, two handicap spaces would be available.
Accessible.
Required, with one van accessible.
I would, I don't know the parking code, I would need that up to our engineer.
Yeah, so typically what you have with this many spaces, and I would count them all with the lifts and everything, so that's 33. So you would need two. A van accessible space would take up 16 feet, and the additional space, the second one, would take up another eight, 24 feet. And we have a handicap space there that I'm guessing is eight or nine feet.
No, that's, this is van accessible. This space is van accessible.
Oh, you got that hatched area next to there. Okay, alright, so you've got van accessible, so then that, you'd have to, I guess, move the space over where the hatching is, but the hatch is the access aisle in the middle. It's a pickle. You gotta, you gotta find a place for a second.
If that would be a condition, we could always redesign it and submit to you.
How would you do that on stage?
Well, I mean, we have space here in the middle of the building, the entry steps and steps back. We could possibly shift that up a foot or two to create additional space at the top. I mean, the curb is set inside the building approximately three foot, so we do have another three foot beyond the last space, 17. So there is additional room. I mean, it's gonna be like any interior parking garage space, it's gonna be at a minimum, it's not a surface parking lot.
Are these lifts loud? Like, can you hear them if you're standing outside on the sidewalk?
Yeah, they're pretty quiet as they cycle.
So you can't hear them if you're standing on the sidewalk in front of the building?
No.
Does your spec sheet have the rating?
I have a.
I only have one copy, I'm sorry.
I can mark this A17?
Eighteen, what's seventeen?
Seventeen is the rendering, so that's A18.
Oh, two, oh, that's two rendering.
The rendering was sixteen.
The first, the first rendering was sixteen, the second rendering was seventeen, and then that would be eighteen. Sorry. Seventeen.
Might that?
So this looks like it's a specification package for the lift system.
I mean, I physically can, next one when they cycle and there's parking.
Do you know the life expectancy? Do you know the life expectancy of the machines, the lifts?
Well, they have to maintain, I would assume that the developer's gonna have a managed building, so there would have to be regular maintenance scheduled for the units.
Are you guys prepared, let's say, one of the tenants doesn't need the lift? Are you guys prepared to remove, let's say, number 15?
That would be up to the developer.
This all operates, operates totally on electric or is it electric over hydraulic?
Hydraulic, that is correct.
Hydraulic, but in electric mode, it really would happen with electricity cut out.
I believe the hydraulic takes over in case of a.
No, hydraulic doesn't take over.
It states, I don't know if we're gonna have backup generation.
I mean, that's, you need, you need a backup generator if, that's what I was trying to get to. If that electrical or hydraulic system breaks down, car's in the air, another car underneath, you need a backup system so that people can get their car out. That's what I wanted.
From what I understand, the building. From, from what I understand, the building's gonna be professionally managed building, so these units would have to be maintained on a normal maintenance basis, and that would be part of the homeowners association for the condominiums, those would be the repairs that would have to be normally maintained. If the power does go out, then, that, that's something that, you know, we would, the developer would have to think about either backup power, or, I don't know if these units come with a backup battery in case of a power outage, but, I mean, I could, I could tell you, I physically put these in 25 buildings at, at much higher density than this, and there's no issue in any of the buildings we put them in.
Well, power outage is, like, you can't say it's not gonna happen.
A, a power outage can happen, yes, but I don't know if the units come complete with a backup battery until we get into the full, you know, we only do this at this level for size, for sizing, and look at the unit cycling to see, you know, if it meets with the parking consultant who specifies, and these are the units that he gave us to design it, and I think that's what we did.
But if, uh, so the board, the, if that was one of the requirements that they had backup, that would be part of the, uh, of the, uh.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, backup generation, I mean, typically it's not a board requirement, that would be something that the developer would, would look at and put into the construction documents, I mean, we could say there's backup power, but for all I know, being on record, these units may come with a backup battery to cycle it down. It would be not prudent if, if it wasn't, if, if you had a, a power outage that someone could get their car down in an emergency situation.
I've gone on the website, I don't see any information on, on the motor that drives it, except that it's a 220, 420 volt, one or three phase, more horsepower. It's probably not very loud. It might make that clunk be clunk as it goes over certain parts of its mechanism, but, yeah, there's nothing about.
Is this located in that flood zone? It's not on here?
No, this is not a flood zone.
Any further questions for Mr. Neta?
So you talked about taking out basically one floor of the building and modifying the distribution and the types of units. I'm sorry, um, did you, did you actually say this square footage of the, the different?
Could I just ask a quick question, Donna?
Yeah.
In, in elimination of that floor, that eliminates one of the variances, is that correct? Is there a height variance still?
There's still.
There is, okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Because we have the rooftop implemented, we're required to be, and that's what gets us over to the portion of the stair towers have to go up to the. Um, there's different units, though, one bedrooms, uh, one bedrooms is 730, 730 square foot, two bedroom ranges from 1,040 to 1,160. Studios are 370, 730 on the upper floor, a two bedroom, 979, and the corners is the same, 1,040. It actually steps back because they sit back a little, so the corner unit, which is 1,160 on this floor, is only 1,140 on sheet A102. The upper units are a little smaller because they're put into the mansard roof. They step back slightly.
And so you, um, how, how much square footage was removed related to the gym and the, the?
I mean, I believe that, that this building right now is 23,664 square feet. We pulled out of, we pulled out approximately 7,500 square feet off the building to, to lower the floor. So it was probably up over 30 originally.
And, and so what was the, um, the basis for establishing the, the size of the studios for footage at 370?
The basis was the information we got back from the realtor for sizing of the units.
So you consulted with the realtor to take a, a sense of what unit sizes are?
Yes, it's actually a realtor, Douglas Elliman, was it? It was Douglas Elliman, they sold a project in downtown, so she consulted us, with us in market rate for the size of units that we should target.
For, okay, and then, um.
Jason. Anyone, any other questions from the board? I will open it up to the public for Mr. Neta's testimony. Please come up, state your name, and ask your questions directly in regards to Mr. Neta's current testimony.
Hi, good evening, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. Are you the prime architect on this? You designed the, the entire exterior of this building?
My firm did.
Your firm did, okay, and, and you're testifying on their behalf? Okay. Was a survey done of the immediate surrounding neighborhood in terms of significant architectural features?
Yes, my staff went around and looked at architectural features of the building, as you heard it states, on the block. We did not do a survey of the entire area, no.
Well, within sight, I guess, within visual range of this, you took a, a look around, so to speak.
Visual range.
Okay, and what would you say are the character defining features, the significant character defining features of this neighborhood?
Well, again, we're, we're looking at a single family residence versus a multi-family building, so there's a lot of characteristics that we tried to capture in the design with materials, coloration, uh, type of, type of siding, type of roofing.
My question is, what are the significant character defining features of the existing architectural stock?
The existing architectural stock, roofs, porches, uh, the variation of roofs, the variation of gingerbread, I mean, that, that standard, but.
Okay.
You're not gonna incorporate that into this type of building.
Why not?
I believe we try to, I mean, we could add a little bit more gingerbread at, at the top of, of the building, but again.
Well, gingerbread is more like icing on the cake. Could you discuss maybe porches, a basic porch, like other, like other buildings?
You know, we, we try, again, all your residential units are elevated above grade, so we didn't, there is a balcony on every unit. Every unit is fitted with a balcony, I don't know where you would put a porch on this building. It has no bearing on, on what, on the porches on a residential versus a multi-bedroom. Do you see any porches on, on the tower? Do you see a porch on the church?
Although, those are clearly architectural anomalies, the primary, the primary architectural style of the neighborhood, you've already testified to. So the code requires at minimum a porch consistent with other properties.
I believe we're asking for evaporation on the porch.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay. Is that permissible? It's a regulation, not an option.
I believe it's, I believe you're, and I'll let the attorneys answer that, you're eligible.
Okay. Without regulations, the board has the power to.
Okay, just, just asking, okay. You, you have a picture up there on the screen of what appears to be a site plan with a property line around it? I'm curious how the structure is cited on the actual property itself. How far from the front property line is this building?
Uh, we don't have the mentions on the architectural plan, I'd have to refer to the site plan.
Site plan in evidence?
Nineteen. Oh, no, I think it was.
We're right to put a site plan in, this is the engineer. So is there a site plan already in evidence?
Yes, there was.
But I'm not quite sure, Jack, we, we didn't really have this testimony with Mr., so.
Yeah, but if you wanna check the record for the site plan, that would be there with a setback. No reason to reintroduce something that's already been introduced?
Yeah, I'm only testifying to a dimension, five foot, so.
Five foot?
Yes.
Okay, and what is required by code? Is it a 25?
Yes, 25, yes.
So you're, you're requesting that as a variance, I assume?
Yes.
A five foot setback, okay. With regard to the other side of the building, the Berg Street side, same question, how does that relate to the property line there?
I believe it's five, I believe the setback is five.
Okay, and what's required there?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five also?
Yes.
Okay. Regarding the adjacent church property, how does this building relate to the alignment of the church property on the block?
I don't know if you can see this, I'll try to turn it around for you.
Sure.
The building almost aligns, the entrance portion of the building pretty much aligns with the church, it's probably two or three feet in front of where the church area is, and obviously this, this pops out as you can see.
Oh, I see. So on the diagram up there on the screen, you have this little cutout in the corner?
Correct.
And that's an entrance?
This dropped back six foot from the face of the building, and I believe the church is within five feet.
And, and then you're saying another three feet back to the south is where the church aligns?
Yeah, yeah, the church is on the other side.
Right.
You're probably, I'm gonna say, I don't have it in front of me, so everything I'm giving you is based off my memory, I'm gonna say is anywhere between three to five feet.
Okay.
In fact, of that six foot.
Did you take a measurement of the setback of the church?
Everything is, I didn't take the measurement, the survey.
Mr. Baumgartner, he, he did not testify to this tonight.
Well, he's showing a diagram that has a property line on it, so I'm asking questions about the property.
I'm giving you a lot of leeway, you're, you're asking questions.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're asking questions that he did not testify tonight.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking questions about the evidence that's on the screen.
Yes, but his testimony tonight was about specific changes that were made, correct?
Correct. What would you like?
It has nothing to do with what I like.
Well, you're objecting, apparently.
I am objecting.
To the evidence that's on the screen?
No, to your questioning. Keep to his testimony.
You don't like my questioning?
I object, I object to the questions that he's asking, I don't believe that my client testified to, uh, to the questions that he's asking.
Okay. All right, so the only testimony that was given is a change in the number of units, the height change, the operation of some parking, and some alignments to property lines was discussed, and those are the only questions allowed at this particular juncture?
At this point, yes.
Interesting. Do you plan to put backup power in this building?
Yeah, that would be a call that would be made by the developers, not required by code, but I believe a condo building may wanna have some type of backup generation.
Okay, all right. The units that were removed, were they basically a replication of the existing floor pattern?
Yes.
So essentially.
Were there actually units removed?
No, that's these days.
Oh, I see, so, so the floor space, the interior volume was eliminated, and the units were made smaller to accommodate the same number of units.
No, we took out a vanity space.
Ah.
And we put back in units.
Okay, all right.
No, we did, I'm sorry. We had 22 units, and now we asking. There's 17 units in the building, we did reduce some of the size of the units, thank you, some are studios, so if there's a smaller unit stock, you are correct, the size of the building was, was reduced by basically a fourth of the building.
All right, so it, all right, being, being as large as it is, I have a question about, I'm sorry, I haven't.
From, from the original application, we were 22 units, the building has been, the density has been reduced to 17 units.
Okay, so you're, so you're asking for a variance on the setback, which you've testified to. I'm curious as to what public benefit is derived from the public giving up their airspace and open view corridor?
May I, Jack? Uh, excuse me, hold on.
You can't answer. That's beyond the scope.
Okay, objection, there's an objection?
No, I'm telling you, the question is, you can't ask that question to this witness, he's not qualified to answer.
Well, he's already answered the question about the setback.
No, no, you're asking the public's benefit, that should be directed to this gentleman in the guard suit, when he takes his turn, he's the planner.
Okay, fair enough.
And justify why.
Jack, fair enough, okay.
Fair question, just.
Absolutely, well, I, I'm not arguing with you, I just like some, some reasonable explanations, that's all. That's all we're asking for, to be reasonable, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public for Mr. Neta's current testimony? Please come up, state your name.
Ernest Minoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So, um, are we allowed to ask questions about the setback? No. Of the, of the witness?
He has testified since he, he did mention five feet, so he kinda opened it up himself. So go right ahead, Mr. Minoli.
Okay, so, um, with regard, when you were asked if you did sort of a study of a larger area of the neighborhood, you pretty much said you kept it kind of pretty close to the, to the building. And for those of us who live here, it seems at this point, most buildings are set back, you, you do know, much farther, except for variances granted, so I think it's 25 feet, and we're down to what, five feet here?
No, the, the building doesn't sit five foot off the sidewalk.
What?
It sits five foot off the property line, between the building and the sidewalk is probably 25, 30 feet.
You know, I'm kinda, just, I was listening to.
You, you have, you have a very large right of way on this material street, which doesn't belong to the development, so we are.
Would you clarify that statement again, Mr. Neta? That, that didn't make any sense to us.
The right, the right of way on the street. So, so, I'm, I'm just estimating now, I don't, I don't have the exact dimension, I'm gonna say from the property line to the curb line is about 35 feet.
Okay, so you're saying, I think because the city of Asbury.
Thirty-five feet, is that correct? That doesn't sound correct.
No, it doesn't.
So I have a copy of the site plan in front of me, and.
Can you scale that?
On the Berg Street side, there is a dimension of 16 feet from the curb to the building, which has a four foot setback on that side, so about 12 feet of.
Right, but the Berg Street, right, the Berg Street right of way in the First Avenue is, is much different.
Unfortunately, they did not give us a dimension, except there's a dimension from the property line to the sidewalk, which is 12 feet. And then there's additional, you know, something. So it's probably a five foot sidewalk, and then it's probably half.
Um, I'm sorry, but we can't hear, it's like whispering, I can't hear anything, the engineer. No, I'm saying for the engineer and the professional, they're kinda whispering, we can't hear a word.
Twenty, between 23 and 24 feet.
Is that what the engineer is saying?
They're trying to figure it out, yep, in a minute.
I, I know, but I think they need to speak up a little bit, too.
So, so First Avenue, just looking at the site plan, there's a dimension or two missing, but we're eyeballing it, and from the building to the curb, I'd estimate about 28 feet, and from the property line to the curb, I'd estimate about 24 feet.
But is, didn't you say there's a variance involved?
The setback.
For the setback, Mr. Minoli.
Off the property line, so yes, there is a, there's a front yard setback, because if the building were to comply with the 25, you would have 50. if the building were to comply with the twenty-five, you would have fifty-five feet from the building to the curb.
You know, it's, I think what we're saying is, Asbury Park's designed with pretty spacious sidewalks, so somehow visually you're incorporating that into really encroaching visually, like the neighbors, but you're saying, well, it doesn't matter, because this property has a very big...
Mr. Minoli, you're commenting, you're not asking a question.
What?
You're commenting. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Neta?
I want to thank you, you always help me with that. So are we depending on like a visual? Because it seems like if you're asking for a variance, I don't know, common sense, you're just coming further forward, is that not correct, or no?
We are asking for a front yard variance.
Okay, and I heard your testimony something about twenty-five feet existing, but you're talking about five feet. So what's five feet? Because...
Five feet is off the property line.
Okay.
But as you're walking down first, the building is almost in line with the existing front of the church. Did you measure it?
Yes.
So then what is the distance?
Mr. Neta, you cannot question the public.
What?
Mr. Minoli, do you have any other questions?
What, are you cutting me off? When they don't even know what they're talking about, you're gonna cut me off.
I'm not cutting you off.
That's what I mean, it's really interesting how you do that to people. They don't even know what they're talking about, they don't say they measure it, the experts are saying, well, we're eyeballing it, it's about, and then you're gonna say to me, "Mr. Minoli, stop asking those questions." Really, that's why each meeting, you cause really friction between the experts and the public, we have a right to ask. And to tell you the truth from the answers, they don't have anything, about anything. No measurements, they're not sure, the professionals are saying, well, we're eyeballing it, it could be, but we're not sure, and then previous testimony from a public is, well, you're kind of doing something very different from the neighbors, and they say, well, we have a variance. So when we ask about the variance, you say, you know, let's move on, Mr. Minoli, because we want to get this passed, like the other ones. So let me move on anyway.
Just to respond to that, sir, I'm not the civil engineer.
No, I know that.
I need you to, sir.
I know that, sir, I, what I'm saying is...
If you're asking me how far the building is off the property line, it's five feet. We are requesting a variance.
It took ten minutes to get to that, but we got to it, thank you. Obviously, it's going to be a condominium, and you keep referencing you've done this with twenty-five buildings. The parking, the parking, the garage, okay, right. So now, my question to you is, is that list available?
I can furnish you with a list of buildings that we've owned, I don't have the list with me.
No, no, I don't say that, but my...
It's a very prevalent type of parking system in a lot of the buildings we're doing in Jersey City and towns like that, so where parking is actually at a premium.
Okay, I'm aware. And obviously, Asbury Park's parking is at a premium, too. So my next question is, are any of those applications in Asbury?
No, they're not, sir.
Okay, all right, but, and you will provide the list?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Along with the density of the building, which is, I'm sure it's already been approved to you this far down the road, but in terms of the parking...
No, no, nothing's approved.
Oh, nothing, okay. So in terms of the parking, the, these are, by your testimony, pretty much left up to the residents to operate, and it seems like you're saying it's a pretty simple operation. If one wife comes down, or one person comes down, and their partner is up, you just pull the car out, you bring the car down and move it out, which sounds okay, but what if it's more than people? Sometimes in buildings, everybody's leaving between eight and nine in the morning, and then the cars are running when they're staging them. How is all this fuming? And then, when the cars are up, is there like special fire code for the wall? Because one of those cars, and cars sometimes catch fire, we know that, is going to be right below someone's bed, and what's between that car and someone's bed? And it's just what I'm asking, okay?
I mean, we don't, I'll answer your question, we don't typically show those, those are construction details, but the type of building type that you would have here is structural steel, first floors with a concrete deck, and on top of that would be a lightweight structure, either wood or light gauge metal. In any indoor parking, you have to, by code, suppress it, so you will have a suppression system automatically fit into the building. In terms of ventilation, the building is designed with open screenings, over fifty percent open, so you do not need mechanically ventilation, by code. In terms of the way these parking units work, you may have a situation, again, we're talking about a seventeen-unit building, so, you know, I'm not an expert on parking, but the demand time to leave for seventeen units is not, is not a lot. The cycle system, which I could refer to, because it's in the literature, is thirty seconds, so it's a quick operation. Typically, there are circumstances where it doesn't happen. Typically, the units are self-policed, just like with a double stack system. The first person in is usually the second person to leave, and vice versa. So it is policed, there will be a management company here, these are condos, I mean, there's, these are ownership, each person would be given an ownership to a space, that's their space.
As part of that policing, and that's a condo, does it require a super?
That would be up to the developer, I'm just the architect.
No, no, okay, okay. No, I understand, it's just that, I'm kind of listening to you about testimony on the parking.
I don't believe there...
And then, and then you're saying they're self, they're policed, but what I'm saying, would that include a super? Because you said it's a condo, and it's...
There's no, I don't believe a super is going in this building, I believe the building will be managed by a management company.
Right. And I live in a building where some buildings have a management company, where there's also an onsite super who plays a role in things like that.
Don't answer that.
Don't, okay. So, so you answered, no applications in Asbury, you gave me the list. The fume thing is basically, the windows will be left open with screens, correct? Is that what you testified?
No, the garage is, the garage is, by code is considered an open garage, because fifty percent of the perimeter wall is open. As long as you have fifty percent of the perimeter, if you look at the rendering, I don't believe we have, so, this is bended, right? That's a bended system, so you can...
At the doors, are those the doors?
No, this is, this is closed, this is closed panels wrapped around the lower level of the building, which allows air movement to pass in and out of the garage.
So on a still day, when the fumes come out, and they start to rise, what about the person on the first floor? I guess we didn't consider that, but that's okay, we can move on.
The building code is the building code, sir.
You're right.
Only design buildings by WIC code, sir.
Right, but codes are modified when they don't meet living standards, or health standards, but...
Well, anyway, we have a change of people...
Okay, don't answer that, he said, don't answer that. Don't answer that, okay. So it seems like in parking, we're dealing with, I kind of walk around for exercise all over Asbury. I can't say as yet I've seen a lift system in Asbury. I know a lot of the newer buildings like this that are glass, you could see in, and I see one level of cars parked. As yet, aside from the twenty-five that you've done outside, I don't think as yet I've seen one in Asbury, and I'm wondering, am I able to ask the expert? Are there any in Asbury, not yours?
If you know, I don't.
Don't answer, don't answer. What? What did he say, don't answer?
No, no, he said, I said, I don't know.
Oh, wait, no. I don't feel right unless he says, don't answer, anyway. Sorry.
It's your architect, if you want to object, Mr. Simoes.
No, I said, he answered, he didn't know, he was, he answered, he didn't know.
Okay. Rooftop amenity you mentioned?
Yes, sir.
What is that?
Rooftop amenity is...
No, I know what it is, but what type of amenity? Is there a pool up there? Is there a...
No, no pool.
Tennis court?
No tennis court, it's a recreation.
Recreation, for the unit owners?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I guess that could be as many as fifty people? So I guess as an architect, you design in for capacity with guests, and all, that's all been done, right?
Not at this level, sir. He's making a statement, you're not asking him a question.
Has there been a load or occupancy capacity study factored into your architectural design? That I can ask.
Not at this level, sir.
Okay. I didn't realize I was coming in at such an early stage on this building, but, okay, so the rooftop amenity, there's no yet structural concerns and, or rather, studies and feasibility and how it will impact neighbors, and, so I do have a question for you, as an expert architect, right? Everyone in the neighborhood was notified. I'm allowed to ask that?
Don't answer that question.
Don't answer that.
That's not up to Mr. Neta.
No?
No.
You know what I find strange? I don't think anyone else who lives in that neighborhood is here.
That's not true.
It seems like I'm advocating.
That's not true, Mr. Minoli, there are people here from the neighborhood.
Within the two-hundred-foot radius?
Yes, they're raising their hands.
Okay, great.
The neighborhood here at the previous needs.
Great. I guess they're the only people that live within two-hundred feet?
Again, that's, that's not for the architect to answer.
Okay. Well, I, I think, did you, did you reach out to...
It's not his question.
Don't answer it?
He doesn't reach out to anyone, he's the architect.
Yeah, I know, but...
All the notices on file, if you'd like to review them after the meeting.
See, it's amazing how I evoke everyone to kind of, the question was, as an architect, we sometimes relate to the community, go out, ask some questions, you know, would you, is it just these people who kind of know about this, or, I mean, the church doesn't care that they're being dwarfed?
I must object to this.
Oh, he's gonna object?
Sustained, sustained.
Okay, all right, as an architect and design, just looking at that building, I guess you're aware that it takes away the sunset for the church? And I know churches have nice windows, they like to see the sun come in, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that.
Can I object?
Yes.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect anything else from you, so I'll move on. So you're designed for the parking, and the machines, we're not at the level yet where you have to kind of meet all the codes, you're just at the, at the design level, is that correct? Okay, so then, when we get to that point, I'm sure you won't be up there talking about the parking, it'll probably be, what, the engineer and the, don't answer that, don't answer.
I don't think that's an appropriate question from...
Okay, well, when the time comes to give a final approval on the parking, and the issues with the machines, the fumes, who's gonna run it? Is it adequate for turning? What happens if more people? All those questions, who's gonna be here to be the expert to talk about the logistics of how it works? That's the designer, we know, but at some point, before there's an approval on this parking, will there be an expert here that we could say, what about the fumes? What about the logistics of moving? What about the machines if there's a failure of electric? What about, you know, the fireproof rating of the, of the walls, and et cetera, et cetera? Will there be an expert to, before it's approved?
Do you have a question for Mr. Neta, Mr. Minoli?
Yeah. Did you confer with the related experts on this garage?
Don't ask.
Don't answer that. Okay, I think that's the end of my efforts here.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I want to thank you for always sort of throwing a cog in the public's questioning. You seem very much in favor always of developers, et cetera, probably because you're a real estate agent, am I correct?
No, you're not.
Oh. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Neta's testimony, from the public? I will close public session. Thank you, Mr. Neta.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, I'd like to call John McDonough, my planner.
Yes, I do. Sure, hi, everyone, my name is John McDonough, it's spelled M-C capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H.
Mr. McDonough, could you give us your qualifications?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey, I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national certification. I testify in this capacity on a nightly basis, I get to see a nice cross-section of the whole state. It's very nice to be here, I haven't been here before in Asbury Park, so I'm grateful to our applicant for letting me here, but again, I do this on a nightly basis, and also during the day in court sometimes, for what it's worth, I'm also a landscape architect, but I'm really here testifying in the capacity of project planner this evening.
Are you licensed and in force?
Yes, it is, current and in good standing, yes.
And you familiar with this application?
Thoroughly, yes.
I ask that, Mr. McDonough, we accept it as a planner?
We accept your credentials, thank you, Mr. McDonough.
Thank you. So...
Mr. McDonough, can you please, you've been engaged to testify as to the, as a planner for this project?
Yes, I have.
And you have the opportunity to review the plans, and you familiar with the location?
Yes.
And you ready to testify? As a planner?
You'll kick me if I say no.
That's correct.
The answer is yes.
I'm sorry, I have a question, did you say PP in AICP, or PE in AICP?
I am a licensed professional planner, that's a PP.
Just making sure, yeah, I know it is, just...
I don't think you can be a PE in an AICP, I don't, I don't think you can get both.
Yeah, you can.
You can, okay.
You could be two of any.
I stand corrected.
Could you tell us, from your standpoint as a planner, as to the, this application, and review the variances that we're asking for, and give us testimony?
Sure, I have conducted what I'd call a standard planning analysis of this application. We review existing conditions, this application goes back almost one year to the day, I think it's, the first time they were here was October ninth, here on October eighth.
Yes, it's been a long process.
We've gotten to see this site in one full cycle here through the seasons, which is something we don't ordinarily get to do from a planning standpoint, but we got to look at this site with the leaves on, with the leaves off, with snow, with all of it, so we have a nice cross-section of this particular piece of property. We looked at the plans, we looked at what's proposed, and I'll say the evolution of the plans that are before you. Our Supreme Court talks about the land use process as being interactive, it is an exchange between an applicant, and applicant has a right to make an application in front of the board, the board makes comments, public makes comments, nobody knows a neighborhood like the neighborhood, the applicant hears from the neighborhood, and we have an applicant here that has actually been responsive, and has scaled back this plan to what we believe from a planning standpoint is an effective infill development. And there were really three core facts that I want to keep bringing the board back to, not within the analytics here, we all know that the variance test is qualitative test, it's not a quantitative test. I know your planner has given you some very good guidance in her report as to the relief that the applicant needs. The density here is nine times more than what the applicant is allowed under the zone code. It doesn't stop there, we don't find that an application is denied based on a number. Again, it's a qualitative analysis, and with that, I'd like to focus on the three core points. The first core point is the legal aspect of this, and I'm not the lawyer, I'm just the planner, but I do want to enter some evidence here with respect to an important legal consideration for the board, and that is what the applicant is allowed to do with the property today, as it now stands. And I have in my hand, which I think we're up to A-18?
Nineteen.
A-19, is a certificate of zoning compliance from your zoning officer dated 2016, that recognizes this particular site as a pre-existing non-conforming Class A rooming house with fifty-two bedrooms in it, fifty-two bedrooms right now. It is a protected lawful land use that can continue on this site for perpetuity. That weighs into my planning analysis, we can't ignore the lawful use of the property as it presently exists. That is not a permitted use in the zone right now, so to the extent that the applicant is actually going from a rooming house to a multifamily use, you can hand it around to the board. That's a very important core consideration for the board. The second, and I think we jumped ahead to my third exhibit, we're gonna, we're gonna go to one that I called... I called. Okay, so I'm going to do a second handout, which, the second factual consideration for the board here is the neighborhood context. So, the three core facts again are the legal use of the property, second is the context, or the contextual consideration of the property, and with that, we're gonna have an exhibit up on the board for everybody to see, but we're also going to give the board handout copies as well.
Can you mark that exhibit number 20?
What would that be?
A20 is going to be a, we compare, it is essentially a neighborhood comparison.
Zoning?
Table, it is two sheets, 11 by 17, file size 11 by 17. You can call it neighborhood comparison exhibit if you'd like. I don't know if that pops out, that's, you can go down one more. All right, that's good enough. So the key point here, very simply, there's two colors. Actually, spill that. There you go, that's good enough. So what we've done is, will the microphone pick me up if I walk over to the screen?
You're gonna have to speak up a little bit, Mr. McDonough.
So, subject property is right in the middle of the exhibit, we've outlined it with a little dash, little box, in the middle of the color exhibit. There is me running on the beach.
You have a ponytail.
But you guys don't know. You see a yellow color to the right, you see a reddish color to the left, and there are two distinct, if we boil this down to very generalized characteristic of the area.
May I ask one question? I just want to be 100% clear, these do, these colors do not in any way represent the actual zoning districts.
The zoning is in the underlay, this is just a-
Okay, I just want you to make that statement clear to ourselves and to the public, this does not represent, this first drawing does not represent the zoning districts.
We'll get there.
Yes. Yes or no, does not represent the zoning districts?
Exactly.
Thank you.
And by the way, interrupt away, it's your jurisdiction, so if you want to cut in or have a question, no problem. Key point, to the left in red is what is essentially a mid-rise neighborhood, that is the predominant characteristic.
And you determine this?
Yes.
This is not legally, this is not a legal map of any sort, it's right, this is just your interpretation.
This is my interpretation of the neighborhood.
Chris, I say we don't include this, just as a recommendation, because this is just his-
I find it overly generous.
I do too, because I can see-
Here's the way you do this. The way you do this is, I'm gonna make this pitch, so to speak.
Okay.
You decide what the probative value is.
Because I remember, let me interrupt you, with the charter school, I remember we had those pictures and we decided if we wanted to include, is that the same thing as this?
Yeah, it's very similar, you decide the value. Witness may say it's this, this, and this, you may look at it and you may say it's not. This is a testimony, you look at the exhibit, but you determine the value that's gonna be placed on these documents for any other incident. So you just, if you want to put negligible value on it, that goes into your analysis at the end when you make a decision, if you want to put a lot of value on it and you think it's good, that's gonna be your decision out of the process.
Thank you, counsel.
Can I get myself clear?
Yes, but what's different from last time that we-
There's no difference, the last time, we didn't exclude the photographs from our regulation in that case. Christopher brought, Christopher Avalone brought out the anomalies in there that didn't represent such and such, so it came down to the probative value of the photographs. And obviously, there wasn't very much value placed on those photographs in that case. So, what you decide this is worth, so to speak, is it worth a lot, or is it not worth anything at all? That's your decision as judges, as members of the board.
But you can't make that analysis until it presents a great-
Exactly, so that's why you let the information come in, talk about it, the witness will more than likely say it's good for his client, but you decide what you feel is in terms of the relationship to the zone.
Okay, I will let you speak, but quick question before, mid-rise, low-rise, what's the difference between the two? Can you explain that?
So, the purpose of this exhibit, and again, thank you, counselor, is to show, we're gonna start from a very broad helicopter view, and we're gonna start to drill into more site-specific details, that's a typical, that's a fair planning analysis, we start with a global view, with a very generalized view. I called it a mid-rise neighborhood because most of the buildings that we see to the left, closer to the ocean, tend to be more in that four to eight-story range, which is typical of a definition for mid-rise development. To the left, to the right, is where we see the smaller lot development. Great neighborhood, by the way, I know we have some members of our public here, smaller single-family residential dwellings, maybe there's some two families in there as well, but low-rise building types. A clear divide in my view in terms of what's happening towards the ocean side, as we start to spill out towards pulling away from the ocean. It's a very generalized statement, that's all I'm saying. You can clearly see on the south side, in this, I'm sorry, on the north side, with north being down in this particular vantage point, on the north side of First Avenue, we've got a nice strong pattern of low-rise, single-family dwellings, charming dwellings. On the opposite side, on the south side, the pattern breaks up, there's no denying that there's a different characteristic on the south side of First Avenue than there is on the north side. We see the pattern breaking up, there is no denying the fact that there is a 12-story building immediately to the ocean side of the subject building, and there is a new four-story building coming immediately behind the subject property. This is-
May I, which?
There's no four-story coming behind the subject.
My understanding is there is zoning in place for a four-story dwelling?
There's no application that's been approved by any board for any use of property behind yours.
There is a scattered site redevelopment, I stand corrected then.
You said there's a project coming, there is no project pending or approved for that site.
I'll stand corrected, the zoning is in place for a four-story building. Okay. So, with that said, we've colored the subject property in what I'm calling development option A, which is what the applicant is proposing here, is a mid-rise development. You can see the nice clean line, that's the only point of this exhibit, is to show that it does relate to the structures that are around it. This is what we would call infill development. Infill development at its best is a blend of that which is around it, we don't only look in one direction, but we take the influences of the other, of the other structures that are around it. There again is no denying that when you walk out of your front door of this building on the First Avenue and look to your right, you see a 12-story building, you have zoned behind you the potential for a four-story building.
It's undeniable.
It's a fact, and my, and my job, and the board's job, is to weigh the application based on the facts, findings of facts. Those are very crystal clear findings of facts that this board can make in connection with this application.
How far is the building, is the building to, since we're going after facts, how far is the high-rise actually set back?
I don't know.
Is it on the curb level, or is it set back by a parking lot? Is there a parking lot to the west side of that building that separates it from Burke Street?
The building is skewed to Burke Street.
I get that, but to the west, to the west of that building, is there a parking lot that's located between that building and the curb line of Burke Street now?
Yes.
Do you know the distance?
No.
So we don't know what the distance is from the building to the curb line and then to the Burke Street, and you're set up for this?
I do not.
Okay.
I'll let the visual speak for itself as to the positioning of the building with respect to the Burke Street right of way. Could you flip to the next page two of that? So, all we're showing now is what happens when you have a low-rise development on this site, and you can see now that the green, or the yellow, comes onto the subject property, in my view, as an intrusion, more than the mid-rise would be, the mid-rise is a better infill, a better blend with that which is around it. Someone in my office actually used the term, it's like a tag, a skin tag if you will, that jumps over the road to the other side of the property. So, again, this is just a very pure visual to talk about the planning rationale for why this makes sense, again, from a purely massing standpoint in terms of what's around it. Now I'd like to take the board down with a closer view of the subject property, that's a very broad brushed view, and I have the third fact which relates more to the condition of the property. We've gone from the lawful use to the contextual analysis, and now we look at more of a condition analysis on the property. So that's going to be.
What do you describe that as?
We call these out as planning exhibits for advanced development, and I believe this is going to be a six-sheet document. Again, tried to make them 11 by 17, so it's easy for the board.
You characterize three different objectives you want to establish. One is the, what was the second?
Was it contextual in a way?
The third?
The third is a, we're looking at the site condition. I'm sorry, I kind of threw it out. They're all the same, they're six sheets and they should be stapled together, I hope. Okay, that sheet six may have fallen off a few, I apologize.
What was the, you know, northeast, the opposite side, First and Burke, those three lots on the corner, are those single-family residences?
They are. The question is on First.
I don't even answer.
So, I'm sorry, are you talking about?
Two 23, two 21, and two 911.
Are they three lots?
No, to the opposite side of Burke Street, go to the left.
Yes, Catty Corner?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
So they're single family.
And they're actually part of some historic designation.
Yeah, okay, so those are three single-family residences there.
Three single-family residences against a very large building?
Yes, I know.
And I know there's a historic building, and I always get the name wrong, and I apologize.
That's over on second.
Ripwood or Redwood or something.
That's on second.
Right, but it does have, it includes other historic.
Okay.
So, did the professionals get copies of this? They make the work.
I'd like to take a five-minute break, if that would be all right, Mr. Samo's with you. So I'll make a motion to take a five-minute.
Yes.
So that-
All three.
Aye.
As opposed? Five minutes.
8:40 PM, Christopher Avalone.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Eric Alpo.
Present.
Brittany Ashland.
Here.
Bill Carter.
Here.
Chris Gonzalez.
Here.
Elizabeth.
Thank you, Orion. Mr. Samo's, Mr. McDonough, it's your-
Thank you, so I think we left off with, we had just entered another exhibit, this will be my last one, counsel, I think it was 821?
Here's number 21.
81, there you go.
821.
821.
Six-part exhibit, just a series of GIS maps, and there's a couple of ground photographs at the end. Again, just to kind of home in a little bit on the site condition itself, some of this you heard through the other witnesses, but they're, they're key from a, from a planning standpoint. First sheet of exhibit 821 shows the subject property on a tax parcel map, very simple map that shows this around the tax parcels. You can see the subject property consists of two tax lots, relatively small in the context of the lots that are around it. Block 3, 306 Lot 2, and Block 3, 306 Lot 3, forms a nice square, 100 feet across, it's 100 feet deep, 10,000 square foot lot. You can see just from a basic plating standpoint that the lots around it are much larger, which again invites much larger development as well, it goes back to my contextual points that I made. It's a corner lot on the corner of First Avenue and Asbury Avenue, which does give the site somewhat of an advantage from an accessibility standpoint, an advantage over other sites that may be more infill, and as I said, it's a nice square lot with some nice regular geometry. Second page is an aerial map, again, just to highlight that this is a, thank you, is a developed piece of property. You can see that it is developed with a four-story, 52-unit rooming house that is locally known as the Del Monte Hotel. I did not solicit police records violations, that sort of thing, but I did look at press articles, and according to the press articles, it does say that there has been crime and safety concerns for many years with this particular location. So again, that's just, the board can give it the weight that they give it, but that's something that I saw in the, in the press. As I said, we've entered the evidence already that it weighs into the planning conclusions here that the rooming house is a protected, non-conforming use that can continue for perpetuity, it's not an old zoning certificate, that's a new zoning certificate that was issued for that particular use. Also, you get a sense of the built-out characteristic of the property. Interestingly, that building actually either extends over the line towards the church, maybe a little skewing going on here with respect to the GIS, or very close to the line, the applicant is actually going to pull the building further away from the church, so there's an improvement over the existing condition in terms of the building-to-building separation. This also shows, of course, the influence of the building next door, the 12-story high-rise, and then the nice line of single-family residences which are on the other side of the street. This is not breaking up any sort of a pattern by not putting those single-family homes on this side of the street.
So, Mr. McDonough, I just want to make sure you testified to the fact that the entire block front of First Avenue on the north side, adjacent to this property, are single-family homes?
Single-family homes that now face a 52-room boarding house that has been identified as a problem in the neighborhood.
I want to make sure that you just told us that those are single-family homes across the street, is that correct?
I believe that was his answer.
That, Mr. McDonough?
The question was asked and I answered.
Yes, so they are single-family homes.
That are across the street from a 52-
That is not what I'm asking, are they single-family homes?
I've answered the question. I've answered the question.
They are single-
What was not clear about the way I answered the question?
Are they single-family homes? Please answer the question.
I've answered the question.
I suggest, just put whatever program down.
Okay, great.
Please proceed, Mr. McDonough.
So the third page shows a land use map, and what we've done now is pull in some color. Again, this is a basic GIS map.
What's the source of this data?
NJDEPGIS 2015.
Mr. McDonough, I believe you just testified to the fact that the homes across the-
I'm sorry, NJGIN 2015 and NJDEP 2015.
I believe you just testified to the fact that the homes on the north side of First Avenue are single-family homes, would you agree with me?
Yes.
They are currently in this map put into the same category as residential high-density or multiple dwellings. So, to me, when I look at this color-coded map, there is at least the necessity for two different, we'll call them orange colors, yellows, one that would indicate where the single-family homes are, and one that would indicate where the high-density or multiple dwellings are. This lumps them all into the same category.
Yes, it does.
Would you agree with me that a single fam, would you, would you testify that a single-family home is a high-density or multiple-dwelling unit?
It is a residential dwelling, which is what the category is that we've shown here.
But why would you put residential, high-density, or multiple, it's, no, no, this is saying it's residential of high-density or multiple dwellings.
No, it's not.
I'm sorry.
The comma indicates that it's a residential unit that is high-density or multiple-
Look, we're not trying to play games with the visual here, we're showing you that it's a residential land use, there's residential land uses on both sides of the street, there's, there's no disputing that those are low-density dwelling units on the other side, we're not hiding that fact.
But you are calling them the same thing by this map.
It's a perfectly appropriate land use categorization, the board, the public are, they can take the purpose of the exhibit for what it's-
Put the weight on it, that's just- I will, I will, yeah. I just want to point out that it's-
I appreciate that, thank you, Orion. Please proceed, Mr. McDonough, we will take everything into consideration.
So, the point here is you see, and we could have pulled in another color here, if we pulled in another color, it would have only emphasized my point even more. This site is located at a confluence- This site is located at a confluence, we have a number of different uses and a number of different building forms. This is not a pure pattern, it is not a homogeneous area, there is a mix of things that are actually very nicely co-mingled and that have coexisted very well. You have a high-rise that clearly has had influence on the neighborhood and has certainly coexisted very well with that which is around it. And if we look at this particular piece of property, sure, we could have pulled in more colors and you would have seen more influences on this particular piece of property. The red of the church, the park, could have shown a high-rise zone. Again, there are a bundle of things happening at this particular... That weaves into the planning analysis as well, this is not all single-family dwellings that are influencing this particular piece of property. In fact, you can see three-quarters on the block that the property is located in is this red color as well, which is not the single-family development. The influence of the large buildings adjacent to the site cannot be overlooked from a physical planning standpoint, we can ignore it if we want to for whatever reason, but it's a fact that they're there. The train station is within a half-mile of the subject site. It's not transit-oriented development, but it is certainly within the realm of transit-targeted development, that's a phrase that we use from a planning standpoint. The ocean, the boardwalk is two blocks away as well, so we have some nice amenities here that certainly make this an attractive place to live, and certainly a place where the market would like to see new housing. Third page, I'm sorry, fourth page, is really the reason why we're here. We're in the R1 Zone District, which does have an overlay. It is in the waterfront redevelopment area, and I went through that in detail, I know you have the prime area, which this is not in, and then you have what I'll call the fringe area, which this is in. It's adjacent to the prime area, which is to the right of this particular sheet, the WPRA district, that's immediately on the opposite side. Subject again is the R1 with the overlay, and then that purple that you see behind the subject site goes to what your counsel was asking about. I thought there was actually an approval on that site, apparently there's not, but there is an approved redevelopment area back there in terms of a scattered-site redevelopment area that would allow for the infill of a four-story structure. These are all influences...
Actually, that's not correct. I did look it up. It allows for the re-establishment of your re-education of the Metropolitan Hotel, in the form that exists.
So...
So the city needs to come up with design parameters for that scattered site.
So we're saying it's a site that is open in terms of development right now?
There is no land use approved for that site except the Metropolitan Hotel. It's a conundrum for the city, and I'm sure if a developer approached the city, that would be the process for understanding what would be allowed to create for the site. But for now, the zoning, the proposed land use, and the design criteria are whatever the Metropolitan Hotel was.
Which was a four-story building?
Parts of it, not all of it.
And parts of this building are four stories, not all of it?
Did they propose all of it?
We'll get there, yes. So again, there are not only land use influences on this property, but there are also zoning influences on this property as well. The point here, you see a bunch of colors happening on this particular piece of property, it's not all yellow, it's not all R1 like we have on the other side of the street, you have a mix of zones. The point is, there are a lot of different things that could be happening around this particular site. That's something we have to consider from a planning standpoint as well. Now comes the key question. We're in the R1 Zone District, it's one of the first things that comes out of your planner's report, why not just re-zone this property, right? The board gives a variance here, isn't that acting tantamount to a re-zone and doing something that...
But that's not our particular calling for this board, Mr. McDonough.
You can't do it, you can't, you can't re-zone. And that's the first question I ask myself, is this tantamount to a re-zone? And here's why I think the governing body did not re-zone this particular piece of property.
Don't give us an opinion unless it's fact. If you've got test, if you've got the records of the governing body, testify. If you're going to speculate as to what the governing body did or didn't do, please don't.
So, the planning rationale is this, every variance application, every use variance application can't be tantamount to a re-zone. Your planner asked a question and I'm trying to answer it from my rationale as to why I believe this is not tantamount to a re-zone. If that WPRA Zone District were pulled onto the subject property, the applicant would be allowed to put a four-story building, send that tantamount to a re-zone, then what the applicant is doing here, we're putting a four-story building with setbacks that would comply with the WPRA Zone District, so how is this not tantamount to a re-zone? It's a fundamental question that this board has to ask.
But that's a question for our council, not a question for the zoning board, Mr. McDonough, so you're...
I think that's the whole application.
No, it's a use variance application. It's a D1 use variance.
It's a D1 use variance.
It's not a re-zoning application, it's a D1 use variance application.
You're presenting something that...
With a multitude of other D variances.
I have to reconcile the omission of the use from the zone. The question is, if the board grants the use here, are they acting in the capacity of the governing body in basically re-zoning this property? It's the first question out of your planner's report, I'm trying to answer it.
Position is that it is not.
But he's touched, so you gave your example.
But I haven't finished my testimony yet. So the rationale is this, why not just pull the WPRA Zone District onto the subject property?
My rationale is why not present this to the council and get their approval?
So... If I could get there, it's a one-sentence answer, because if the zone were pulled, the WPRA, it opens up this site to a whole plethora of...
But it's my position that you're sitting in the wrong place.
I can't answer...
No, I know, I know the point you're trying, I get what you're trying to say.
I can't finish my main point, it's just one sentence, that's all I'm trying to say.
Well, lay your sentence in the portal, lay it out.
If the WPRA Zone District were pulled onto this particular piece of property, it would have a more negative impact on the subject property and the neighborhood than a use variance. This is exactly what the use variance mechanism is for. It's why NJSA forty-colon fifty-five D dash seventy D is in the statute, it's why we have a zoning board, and you just don't give everything to the governing body. The reason why is if this were re-zoned, if that zone line were pulled over, you could have a restaurant there, you could have a retail store there, you could have an eight-story building there. I don't think the public wants to hear that that's what's coming on to the subject property. This is a contained application. We're now looking at seventeen dwelling units in a four-story building.
Across the street on Bird Street, you cannot put a restaurant, you cannot put a retail store in that section of the WPRA.
And it's not the only option, if you wanted a different zone to exist there and you wanted it re-zoned, you could ask the city council to re-zone it to something else.
To spotzone it?
Or as part of...
Are you suggesting a spotzone?
You could ask for a re-zoning.
You can present your argument to the council, not to this governing body.
Not us, I'm not asking you to do anything, but it's...
Or part of the master plan re-examination which occurred about a year ago occurred, they have evaluated this block and said, as a transition between that P and the WPRA and this vacant land and are not quite properly functional, scattered site, site, maybe it gets a different R designation.
Transition, different R designation, to transition between...
Because we do have an R2 that permits more than single or two-family residences, we have an R3 that permits multifamily residences, there are any number of other zoning classifications that could have been applied, not just to these two lots, but to the entire block or including the church property. There are a multitude of options that the governing body and the planning board evaluated as part of the master plan re-examination process. And I have only, you know, five degrees of separation relationship to that because I worked with a firm that performed that analysis, I wasn't part of it at the time, but I'm in the process right now of writing all the zoning events that came out of that recommendations, those recommendations, and making them out as a zoning map. So, I think, of all the people in this room, I probably have a pretty good perspective of what the objective was, or why things were or weren't done. So, the choice is made not to change, not to alter, maybe there's an error, because again, we have this anomaly with scattered-site redevelopment parcel, but errors do not, you know, grant you wishes. So, what I'd like to hear more, because again, using other zones, other zoning classifications do not provide me with guidance on why this site is particularly suited for multifamily residents. I would like to hear more about why this site is particularly suited to being a multifamily residence, rather than whether the degree of changes constitutes re-zoning. That's somebody else's decision later down the road. Right now, we want to find out why this property, you guys feel is particularly suited for multifamily residents at this density with this four-era ratio, with these building constraints and block constraints, what, tell me how this site screams to you guys, this is what belongs here.
Well, it doesn't have to scream.
After this kind of meetings, it better be...
We are not saying that this board cannot grant the D variances, are we?
No.
Okay.
So, John, so your testimony is that, if you, if we have presented a case for the D variances, this is not a re-zoning issue, that was the context of your, we're not talking about re-zoning, not talking about going to the city council, we're talking about the D variances that we're asking for. Can you please continue with your testimony as to the basis for the variances that we are seeing?
Absolutely. So again, as we were going through the sequence of the testimony here, it was just up to the zoning part, that's where I brought up the issue of trying to give the board some comfort that if they granted a variance here, they would not be acting inappropriately or doing something that only the governing body could do, in my opinion. That said, your planner just raised a question about raising, or satisfying the statutory test of site suitability, and I think the best way to deal with that is to flip over to the next page. So there are influences on this particular piece of property that are not typical of the neighborhood, that certainly goes towards the consideration of site suitability. It doesn't have to be a unique site in the neighborhood, but it has to have some distinctive properties that would separate it out. So again, the board is not granting something here that could be applied to all of the properties in the neighborhood, it has to be distinct attributes that are, again, different from what we see, not necessarily unique, but distinct. So frame number five is a photo that we actually took a year ago, it really hasn't changed, but that's a view of the subject building from the intersection, it's a four-story building, we're going from a four-story building to a four-story building, it's a building that presently has fifty-two bedrooms in it, we're going to twenty-six bedrooms, so we're cutting the bedroom count in half on the subject property, we're de-intensifying purely from an analytical standpoint in terms of the number of bedrooms within the facility.
But the FAR is not decreasing though.
Correct, the mass is, the mass is not decreasing, that's correct. So the point here is that we have a building that's been here part of the landscape for a long time, and I think the board can give deference to that fact as well, that there's a four-story building there, sort of a bland appearance, a distinct lack of landscaping from this particular vantage point, and again, you can, you can give the building whatever weight you want to give it in terms of its existing condition. Now, finally, flipping over to what's sort of a before and after, the last page shows one of the exhibits that Mr. Neta had entered earlier, that's what you get with the proposed development, you're going from what we showed in frame five to what we're showing in frame six, trying to restore some grandeur to the property in question with a massing that's not, I'll say, uncharacteristic of the neighborhood in terms of what we saw on the other side, Catty Corner, I think your counsel mentioned that that one hotel, that one mid-rise building that I was talking about was actually on Second Avenue, but again, it is something that is not necessarily uncharacteristic of the neighborhood itself. The applicant, we think, has put a lot of care, a lot of detail into the building, it's unfortunate, I think, that there wasn't some historic commission involvement early on, it sounds like that there either isn't a historic commission here, or the historic commission had no input. It sounds like we have an applicant that may be willing to consider certain, certain things, but again, this is the application that's, that's before the board, the applicant has tried to put a significant investment into the property to create an attractive building, we started with five stories, we're down to four stories, which matches what's there now, and I stand corrected, your board planner asked me if it was a four-story building, it is a four-story building, it needs a height variance for those two appendages that you see at the end related to the bulkheads associated with the elevators to get to that rooftop amenity space, so that's what's triggering the height variance here. But again, I think it's safe to say...
Hang on, I'm sorry, the height variance is for more than just the stair towers or the elevator towers.
Is that true, Neil?
The maximum height in the zone is, I'm sorry, thirty feet, and the roof, which is the top of the fourth-story units, is forty-five, and then the stair towers exceed above that.
Okay.
So, the building does exceed.
Got it, okay, I thought I heard otherwise from the testimony.
Part of the reduction, they were able to get away from, they were able to reduce some of it.
Okay, so again, with that backdrop, again, I just tried to give the board some facts to give a planning rationale to the application that's before the board, otherwise we're just looking at this from a pure analytics standpoint, I think there are some facts, some physical facts here that can give some weight to the board's evaluation of this application. The drier part of the testimony, we run through the legal proofs here, and the first relief that the applicant needs, again, we're in the R1 Zone District, the waterfront redevelopment area overlay, and this is the rehab infill sub-district, this is not the prime district, this is the rehab infill district. Permitted uses include single-family homes, home occupations...
Is this the infill?
It's the renovation infill.
Wait, before you go on, are you done testifying on these?
Yes, all done.
So is this when I can say what I feel, taking this into consideration, no, or is that later?
Well, when you, when you go over the totality of the testimony and the evidence, you have your own mind, put whatever weight you feel that...
Okay, just wondering if that was time-related.
When you do your, I'm sorry, when you do your analysis, when you're making your decision, you look at all the evidence, you listen, weigh all the testimony, and you put whatever value you feel it's worth.
There's no particular moment to do that.
Except what we're doing, right?
That's correct, I'm sorry. I should have been more clear. I'm sorry.
So again, we're in the R1 District waterfront redevelopment area overlay, maybe it says renovation, not rehab, I'll have to go back and look, but I have in my notes here rehab infill district, permitted uses include single-family homes, home occupations, recreation uses, and houses of worship, and as we showed in the exhibits, that we're at the edge of the prime waterfront district, which is this massive, as the board knows, fifty-six-acre district, four-to-eight-story buildings, three thousand one hundred and sixty-four dwelling units are contemplated in that vast area. Four categories of relief, I'm going to bundle them in terms of the proofs before the board, we're going to start with the D1, which is the use relief, relates to the activity to allow multifamily in a non-multifamily district. Second are the intensity of use controls, that relates to the floor area, the D4, and the density, the D5, and of course, the D6 related to the height. There are a bundle of C variances or dimensional variances, and then mostly through the testimony that came through the architect, the design-related relief, related to the architecture of the building and the fact that those architectural standards are really aimed at single-family dwellings and having porch in the front and the like. The architect has addressed that, but I'll come back to that as well, and there are some parking design exceptions as well, we'll talk about the standards of proof for all of them. But the first category of relief is the use variance, to allow multifamily which is not permitted in the zone. We always look at the positive criteria, which I'll say is the upside of the application, one of the members of the public had a good question, what are the public benefits associated with this application? It's my job as the planner to advocate what those benefits are, and then of course, on the negative side, we look at the downside of the application, and there is somewhat of a balancing to this, but there is also the aspect of site suitability and the enh- and the enhanced proof of reconciling with the master plan. On the positive side, the public benefits are both visual and functional, and I'll, I'll fall back on the exhibits that we've given the board. This project is going to replace in what has really become an eyesore building in the landscape with a beautiful building, and functionally, it's going to eliminate an undesirable land use with contemporary quality housing. This is housing stock that is well over 50 years old, which is often an indicator of an area in need of rehabilitation. The project promotes the planning goal for a variety of housing choices. As I said, there's going to be fewer bedrooms here, 26th, than presently there in terms of 52, so cutting it in half. The project is going to promote the planning goal for efficient use of land, taking a already disturbed piece of property, putting it back into functional use, and I think arguably, the, the property in its current condition at the corner, as vacant land is being underutilized, and this puts it back into some form of, of functional use. As I said, the site is particularly suited because it has been used as a, as a like-use for many years with the 52 units of bedrooms that are there, the fact that it's on a corner, which enhances accessibility, and the influences contextually of, of that which is around it that are distinct to this property. I think the board can give some credence as well to the fact that this is in a, I'll say transit-targeted area as well, which is where we like to cluster residential uses in the interest of promoting ridership, in the interest of lessening the reliance on the, on the automobile. All of these tie from the land to the land use law, and we always have to look at the purposes of zoning that are advanced here. I see the purposes of zoning as being advanced, there are about 18 or so of them at the preamble to the statute. The main purposes here include purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare, purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. For all of the site suitability reasons that I've given, I see this as an appropriate location for this infill development, which is a nice blend of the massing that's around it. Also, the advancement of purpose H, which is the planning goal to provide for the free flow of traffic. You heard through both the traffic expert and through Mr. Neta how this is, there's a parking management plan in place to accommodate the development. The actual supply will meet the actual demand here through the, the testimony of the experts before me. Additionally, the advancement of purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, not only architecturally, but landscape architecturally as well. And then finally, the advancement of purpose M, which is the efficient use of land as a redevelopment project as opposed to new development, I'll say on the fringe. That's the upside of the application, those are the public benefits, and I would counter them with the, with the negative aspects. I think the board has done a, a good job of asking the proper questions, the public has as well. In terms of the usual considerations with respect to negative criteria, parking, the site is self-sufficient as to parking. As I understand it, the analytic is met here, there's a question as to the functionality of, of some of the spaces, and I think the applicant has agreed to work more closely with the board in that regard. There was a question from either somebody on the board or somebody in the public about, is this the first time these lifts are being used here in the city of Asbury Park? And the answer is no, there are other locations. One is actually a surface parking lot that's over on Madison, where this lift system is already in place as well. There is expert testimony on the record that the site as designed will function safely and efficiently. That is, I'll say, uncontroverted expert opinion, I, I have to rely upon that as part of my planning conclusions. And then, of course, in terms of the negative criteria and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, I point the board back to the exhibits that I've given, that this is an effective blend of the multiplicity of forms and influences on this particular site. Again, it's really what a use variance is supposed to be. One use, one piece of property, not a complete rezone to allow a plethora of other things happening here. And what's nice about the use variance mechanism is that the board has the power and the authority to grant reasonable conditions that can contain the use, as opposed to a, again, a rezone, which would not give the board that kind of control. The proposal will improve the site's relationship to its surroundings, not degrade it. The proposal will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan, but rather promote the same purposes of the MLUL, which are articulated in your, your zone plan. Relief relates to a specific piece of property with a distinct physical characteristics that is atypical of the zone, and because of this distinct characteristic, it's my planning conclusion that the relief is not tantamount to a rezone. Our courts have established that being located at the edge of a zone district where the use is permitted can be a basis for the grant of a use variance. This is Supreme Court decision, the Price versus Hamidji case, where the court found that being located at the edge of a zone may be a basis for, for grant of use relief. It's a relatively new case, 2014, and this is not one of the lower courts, this is the state Supreme Court. The prime waterfront district, again, allows for four-to-eight-story buildings and over 3,000 dwelling units. The condition of the property and the influence of the high-rise, again, cannot be overlooked in the context of this planning analysis, and it would be an improper planning evaluation, in my view, to put those influences aside and just assume they're not there, just not to look at that building, I don't think is a, is a proper planning analysis. That takes us through the Medici aspect of the test. We now move down to the intensity of use in the D4, the D5, the D6. They're all somewhat interrelated, so I am bundling them here. If the board feels I need to infill with any, any evidence, again, I'm going to fall back on my conclusions based on the, the evidence that I've given the board. In terms of the D4 floor area, I believe we're at now 2.36 versus 0.5. We started at 4.36, the board can give that, whatever weight it wants to, but the floor area is a function of the use itself. If the board finds the use is appropriate, I think the form of use ties into that, it's a function of the height. 0.5 is certainly an appropriate standard for single-family, but for mid-rise, 0.5 is not, is not a standard that I've run into for mid-rise development. The current floor area of the rooming house is 2.77. That's actually higher than what the applicant is proposing here at 2.36, so not a substantial departure.
May I, can we add some nuance to that testimony?
Sure.
That's 2.77 on its existing 5,000 square foot lot.
Yes, it is.
It is 1.35 on the-
Yes, it is. I'll give, yes, yes.
So you can't make that comparison?
It's, so I just want to make sure that that comparison-
I just did make that comparison.
Oh, you shouldn't, because it doesn't, it's like apples to oranges. What's the FAR to both properties, which is what we're looking at right now?
I don't know.
It's half of whatever you just wanted.
So it's 1.39 is-
On its current lot, right now, the rooming house is 2.77. So there is, there is clearly a, a density that has been established in this particular area on that particular site, which, which, again, is a protected land use that is not going away, again, without some form of redevelopment on the property. Site can, the real core aspect of the test for an FAR test is whether the site can accommodate that additional FAR. From a massing standpoint, for all the reasons I've given, my planning conclusion is, is yes. From a accommodation standpoint, in terms of parking, in terms of utility demand, water, sewer, and the like, for testimony that the site can accommodate the demand that would be associated with this floor area on this particular site. The density, 17 units versus the 1.8, that is the equivalent of 74 dwelling units per acre versus eight dwelling units per acre. As I said, looking from a pure bedroom standpoint, 52 down to 26 can be a basis for that density relief as well. 74 dwelling units per acre is not out of the range for what would be a transit-targeted area, where I've seen written codes that are in the range of 100 units per acre in transit-targeted development. The current density of the rooming house, again, on its standalone lot right now-
To your knowledge, is this a transit, is there any designation for this site being a transit-focused development? To your knowledge?
From a general planning stand-
To your knowledge, is there a specific indication that this is a transit-focused site?
Maybe like an actual designation, a formal designation.
Formal designation. Is there?
No.
Okay. Just, just a question.
So the current density of the rooming house, the current density of the rooming house on the lot it's on is over 400 units an acre. This is going to be, again, 74 units per acre over the totality of the site. The site is immediately adjacent to a high-density district, and as I said, it contains 52 independent units now. I have a note here, the zoning was recently changed in the redevelopment area, as recent as 2018, and I believe the essence of it was to make it easier for development in the prime redevelopment area, but again, that, that's just a, a broad statement there.
But that has nothing to do with this site.
No, because this is actually-
But you can't say that.
I'll retract that statement. The site accommodates any problems with the added density, again, parking demand, water and sewer, and in that regard, I believe the Grubbs test is met. We now move down to the D6 height test, and this is what we call the Grasso test, it's a case that comes out of Spring Lake, where we had an overly sized dwelling next to smaller dwellings. The test there was to look at the purposes of height control and whether any of those purposes of height control are being violated. Somebody raised the question of the influence on this particular building, on the, on the church and the shadow impacts. I don't know that a shadow study has necessarily been done, but I think we can give some credence that there is a four-story building next to the church right now, closer than the subject building is going to be. So, and this is also going to provide an extra story over a three-story building with the added benefit of providing parking at the base. So one of those levels relates to the benefit of, of providing for off-street parking. The neighboring building is 12 stories, so there is somewhat of a, I think we can say a sequence happening here, or stepping down from the 12 stories to the four stories to the, the two-story structures on the opposite side of the street, and those low-rise dwellings on First Avenue. Perfectly appropriate from a planning progression standpoint in terms of massing. And as I said, the adjacent redevelopment zone in the W, in the waterfront zone is in the four-to-eight story range, and, well, again, I saw four stories in the back portion there, but I guess we'll leave that to where we actually land when that zoning is determined there. So in my view, none of the purposes of height control under the Grasso test are being violated here. This is not going to block any scenic views, this is not going to create any negative shadow effects, and for all the reasons that I've given, taking this mass and dropping it on this particular site, falling back on the visuals that this applicant has given you, it is a nice effective blend of the, the surrounding area. The bulk relief, all of the bulk relief is justifiable under the flexible C balancing test. Mr. Neta went through where those setbacks are. They're all closer than the 25-foot that is required under the zone scheme. Again, that's more appropriate, I would say, for a, for a low-rise development than a mid-rise. Interestingly, the zone across the street, the waterfront zone, has no setback requirements, and the zone behind has no setback requirements as well. So I think that certainly can be given some deference as well from a, a planning standpoint. The building coverage at 96.75% versus the 25% really relates to the engineering testimony, primary reasons there, that we don't want to create excessive runoff on an adjacent piece of property, we want to maintain some greenery, the applicant is providing a landscape area here along the perimeter of the property, and has mitigated any additional runoff in the form-
Can, can I, you just quoted a number of 96%, may, may we ask where that is derived from?
Let me get the, I think it actually has come down, I have, we're getting at some older ones.
Yeah, it's from the original.
So it's actually, the building coverage is now at 81%. I apologize for that. We've, we've, so there has been movement.
That's the proposed building coverage. The existing building coverage is?
I, I'd have to dig that up.
Approximately 44%.
Thank you, I'll accept that. Is that on the two lots or the one?
That's all on the 10,000 square, the zone lot.
That's the total, okay. So I, again, I think the board has to give some deference to the fact that development of the other lot is inevitable, and I think it's, it's an unfair basis to just use it as, as vacant land, there has to be some consideration to, to what could be. The point is, the applicant has provided mitigative measures to lessen the negative impact associated with that additional coverage. And I would say on the positive side, in terms of this C2 balancing, that relief is necessary to effectuate the public benefits that I articulated at the beginning of my testimony. The last bundle of relief are all design exceptions, and they relate predominantly to parking and predominantly to architecture. We can certainly go through them one by one, but I think I will fall back on the testimony that has been offered by the experts before me with respect to parking, the stall lengths, the aisle widths, the driveway separation. All will function safely and efficiently from an engineering standpoint. I've heard the testimony of an architect that the design here is responsive to the surrounding neighborhood, and we've tried to pull in some elements that would add value and quality to the neighborhood and respect the surrounding neighborhood context. I think the board well knows that when we're dealing with design exceptions, we don't have to apply a balancing test here. It's not whether the pros outweigh the cons, it's just whether the relief that the applicant is seeking is reasonable. And there's also a word in there under section 51 of the statute in terms of impracticality, and that's basically means, does strict or literal compliance serve a practical planning purpose? And to, to provide a porch on this building or to pull in some of those architectural elements, the applicant can to a, to a certain extent, but I think it's within a reasonable planning degree and architectural degree that a porch at this particular location is certainly not going to upset the pattern of the neighborhood. And in that regard, the applicant has put forth what I think is, is an attractive design that will certainly meet the overall intent of, of the ordinance to provide a building that, that certainly responds to the surrounding landscape. All said, tried not to be too long-winded here, but I had to get my proofs on the record. I think this is a good application, I think there's been positive movement, interaction with this, with this applicant and this board. An applicant's allowed to make an application, an applicant's allowed to give us reasons why it thinks it's a good application, and for all those reasons, I think the tests here have been met, and approval is warranted.
Thank you. I have one question. Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Anyone from the, from the board that has any questions in regards to Mr. McDonough's testimony? It's just the board right now. All right, anyone from the board professionals?
Okay. I do, yeah. I want to clarify one thing. I know a couple of the members, Gallo particularly, was kind of hammering home on, with respect to calculating the entire lot area as the comparison, you know, the building coverage and floor ratio. And so I did pull up the site plan and existing conditions. And, and I agree with you that the entire tract should be considered as part of that evaluation. The existing building does have a small piece that extends over the property line of the two, you know, joining blocks. And then there are other features related to supporting of the principal structure that are on that other block. So when you look at the whole, the totality of the Del Monte, it is not just entirely constrained on half of the tract. It does extend across that property line, that imaginary property line. So I think it's reasonable for you to view those comparisons as, you know, no, you can't just say it's on 5,000 square feet, it's affecting the entirety of the 10,000 square feet. And so you should look at that, that number rather than this, this other number. The other thing, I just wanted to also clarify, if I, if we're going to make notes. So, so again, it's a, two 5,000 square foot lots is the subject property that are in use right now as one property, which would be considered that whole 10,000 square feet. And it's the remainder of those two things, so I wanted to just get that clarification. So the fact that it is, the property is close to its own boundary makes it, and the zone that it is next to is a zone that commits multifamily use and high density, makes it suited for this use?
I'm just, all I'm pointing to the, the board to is the court case that said that that can carry weight in, in a zoning evaluation. carry weight in a zoning evaluation, that we are located at the-- This is, this application is different than if we were in the middle of that neighborhood across the street on one of the interior lots. This is, this is on the edge, and I think that's something the board can give consideration to here. This is not going to break up a pattern on this side of the street, in my view.
Any other questions? Jason, Donna? No? So I'll open up to the public for Mr. McDonough's testimony.
Good evening. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. Regarding your analysis of the zones in the area, it's my understanding that you were proposing some hypothetical zones in your display there, the colored, orange and yellow and things. Those were your fictitious zones, correct? Not the real zoning in the area?
I never said they were zone-- I never, I never said that these were zoning.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
It was a helicopter view categorization of the area.
Okay. Okay. So the existing real zone is an R1 zone, correct?
So the real zone is your waterfront redevelopment plan. That is the overlay here, which is a, which is a zone that goes back to 1984.
Yes, I'm--
1984.
Yeah.
And no true, no redevelopment of this site has happened since 1984. And it's something that's to them. Nobody's lying to help to put in a permitted use and knock down that building mass there. This redevelopment plan has gone through at least seven changes, and nobody's lying. Plenty has to be rooted in reality.
Okay, I think, I think you're over-embellishing the answer here, but--
Well, you opened the door.
That's okay. What is, what is the official zoning of this area?
I mean, I believe the testimony has been stated it's R1.
R1?
We haven't changed that yet.
Okay, thank you.
It's the R1 and the waterfront redevelopment plan overlay.
Okay. Oh, okay. You, so you evaluated other overlays to the R1. This is an R1 area, and you're saying that the waterfront redevelopment plan provides an overlay to that. What other overlays exist in the city documents that affect this? Are you familiar with any historic districts that are overlays to this district?
I'm not familiar. I don't, I looked at your redevelopment plan and identified historic areas catty-cornered to the site, but I did not see this.
Okay. Are you aware that R1 zones are in fact designated as historic districts per zoning?
I thought there was historic district--
That's not correct.
That's not--
Yes, it states that specifically right in the ordinance, yes. For the purposes of this section, R1, it says right in the ordinance, read it, that they are designated historic districts for design regulatory control.
For design.
For design.
Yes, for design. Okay, all right. Are you aware that this is a Monmouth County-designated historic district also called Library Square Historic District?
I am not, and I don't--
Okay, thank you.
What teeth, if any, that has?
I'm just asking if you're aware of that. Are you aware that this is a state designated by State Historic Preservation Office, state-designated turn-of-the-century historic district?
Yeah, I don't know if that has any legal weight in this application.
You're not aware of that?
I'm not aware of any regulatory requirement.
I'm not asking about that. Just asking if you're aware that there are other overlays to this.
I'm answering your question.
Okay, thank you.
Best I can.
Now, you had something up there that indicated a offset from this building to the church next door. You had a site plan of some sort, as I recall. As the planner, you're, you're kind of responsible for establishing this building on the site. I was told earlier at my other questioning session with the architect, I was wondering what the relationship is in the building facades between the church next door and this building as regards to setbacks. I was told you would be the guy to answer that.
So it is closer to the street.
This will be closer to the street?
Yes.
Okay. And my question also at that other questioning session was, what public benefit is there to losing green space and a view corridor in the public realm by moving this building closer to the street?
Because it all ties together what is an overall public benefit for the building at existing site. We don't look at variance as an isolation. The courts tell us, look at the application as a whole.
Okay.
That setback variance ties into the overall benefits that this building is going to provide. This infill building, which is going to be moved 17 feet away from the church, whereas we have a building that is--
I'm not asking about the separation between the buildings.
You asked the public benefit. I gave you the answer.
Okay, I'm asking about the public benefit to losing green space along--
Effectuate the beneficial project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Anyone else from the general public? Please come up, state your name.
Any reference, please?
John Nash, 301 First Avenue. I'm right across the street, and I believe you have the current building. There is an eyesore to the neighborhood and the community, but I just have a couple of questions about what you presented. Let me put my photo real quick. On the map you did with the WPRA zones, you stated that in those zones, they could go up to eight stories in those zones?
It's a four-to-eight story zone in the prime district, yes.
So the whole, the whole block between Berg Avenue and Grand Avenue, it's my understanding that they can only build up to four stories in that neighborhood?
I have to get a clarification on that. I know there is a step-down in the massing that shown in the illustrations, but I don't know that I saw that actually in the--
And I think on Asbury Avenue, the whole, excuse me, the whole empty lot between Asbury and Cookman, that's also a four-story maximum. So you're saying that if this went back to the city council, they could extend the W, the zone up that block anyway, but right now they're only building four stories. So it's not like they're going to build a eight-story building where the Metropolitan stood or where anything is on Asbury Avenue.
So if the ocean is to the right in this exhibit, and there's a step-down from the eight to the four, it's a four-story building. This continues that.
I'm telling you, in that zone, there are no eight-story buildings that are going to be built in that zone. They're all, the last building that was approved was four stories.
That's what, and that's what I'm saying. This is the edge of a four-story district. We're proposing a four-story building. We're not proposing a 12-story building.
But you're saying that if they went back to the city council, where this should have started, they could extend the WPRA zone all the way into that zone. So what's the difference if they do, if that's all they're allowing to build there is four stories?
Because once you allow this zone, once you pull this line into this area, you can have a restaurant. I would think that would happen more than--
You cannot.
Okay.
Before, you cannot put a restaurant directly across on Berg Street, the WPRA. I'm also a consultant, and I worked on the master plan. You cannot put a retail location across the street. The other, once you get down to Kingsley Street, yes, but in the location between Berg and Kingsley, you can't put a restaurant and you can't put retail operation. It's going to be residential, and that building is the anomaly. The 12-story building is the anomaly. What there's currently before the planning board, the rehabilitation of the garden complex to the right of the three single-family units that you were discussing before. But before you said that, and I'm correcting, then I corrected, then I'm correcting it now.
Thank you for that. I was not, I was, I did not read that in--
You can't do that.
I didn't read it in here, but--
And further clarification, because I'm looking at the building height map in the waterfront redevelopment plan. The maximum building height along Berg Street for every block is three stories. Even when you extend onto, up to Heck, Cookman, where that townhouse fell minutes ago, the maximum building height for the waterfront redevelopment plan is three stories. So that's the block I'm talking about between Berg and Heck. The waterfront redevelopment plan has a long that most likely boundary, the maximum building height, is three stories. So--
Could you refer to a page number for me?
I don't know. I'll try. That's where we start.
It looks, page 70, maybe?
71? 70 or 71? Yeah, 71.
So that, that block catty-cornered to the site, there show three stories and four-story structures?
Yes. So we just reviewed the triangle of the townhouses, and we're going to do a plan. It's a three-story building corner. So the corner of Asbury Avenue and Heck, corner, is three stories. Mid-block would be four stories, but furthest east projection of that block would be eight stories. Again, in accordance with the rest of that alignment of the east of Berg is greater than four stories. If you're on Berg, north of Second Avenue, because that's where redevelopment is anticipated, the existing, that forward existing development is expected to be maintained, all along Berg Street, the maximum building height is three stories. So, and again, the directive in the waterfront redevelopment plan is that as you move interior to the city, as you move west away from the waterfront, building heights go down so that they transition and match the existing kind of single-family residential development that is occurring in these blocks west of Berg.
And I don't know if that, if that is just diagrammatic or if that is actually--
Well, it's the mandatory, that is the one, the waterfront redevelopment plan is like a mandatory criteria.
And could you tell me--
They actually designate these sections of the different block fronts with mandatory building, maximum building heights, and it requires a plan amendment if you want to de-paint it. That's the one that's actually happening.
Well, I guess my question would be whether this diagram--
Is it--
I'm just not understanding whether this diagram shows that three stories has to be on one side of the block and four stories has to be on the other, or if this is illustrative of a, of a step-down. It's not clear to me.
On where?
On page 70 of the redevelopment plan. Says the building height map illustrates the maximum height of buildings and stories.
Maximum height, yes.
It's illustrative. I don't, I, the actual language, the actual language in the redevelopment plan says in
Perhaps we're getting away from Mr. Nash's question.
Sorry.
No, I'm glad I'm bringing up more conversation for you guys to discuss.
Yeah, as I read the redevelopment plan, it says that four to eight, and there's an illustration, but I don't know if that illustration is actually something that says. It's illustrative. I understand the intent to have a, to have a step-down.
The next question I have is, we talked about the church next door. If that church was burned down or torn down for any reason, that property, it appears would be in the R1 zone still. So that whole block is definitely still R1. I mean, why don't you move that over to the Metropolitan? We'll let you build that right there. But, yeah, that's--
Sorry, I don't understand the question.
No, the, next door to the proposed structure on that--
Oh, you're running--
R1, the church, where the church sits. If the church was gone, that would be R1, right? They would have to build a single-family home.
Yes.
But what churches are permitted in the R1 district?
Okay. Yeah, but I'm saying, but if they tore it down and somebody else wanted to redevelop it, they'd have to redevelop that as a single-family home.
Or a church.
Or a church, right.
Or the--
Well, there's a couple of others. Right, so that's, that's my thing. That's an R1 zone, and it's R1 zone for a reason. And, and the city council created the master plan the way they did to keep the R1 zones the way they are, to keep the integrity of the community throughout. So that was my, my question about the church. If I, if I wanted to convert my, if our neighbors wanted to convert their homes into multifamilies in a single-family home residence, residential neighborhood, we wouldn't be able to do it that easily. So to have this much density come in to a single-family neighborhood, I don't think it fits with the neighborhood.
Well, I'm not sure if you're, one of those homes across the street there, and if you're replying that, I see everybody should be allowed to do it. No, I'm trying to give the board reasons why this site is different than those other homes. You talked about interior lots versus--
And then you mentioned the, the public benefit of this. The only public benefit, the only benefit I see is going to the developers on this property. They're the ones who are going to make all the money. I don't see a public benefit at all. I live across the street.
Well, this sounds like a statement on a question, but again, you have to give consideration to less questions.
You'll get your chance to comment, Mr. Nash, at the end of this particular application.
Thank you. When will that be?
Soon, soon. Anyone else from the public for Mr. McDonough's testimony?
Questions on his testimony?
Questions? Cross-determination?
Ernest Spagnoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. As a planner, would you consider like a, like a major condition or major redo presentation or no?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand--
That's not a question?
That's not based on--
That's not a question?
I just don't understand the question.
Okay.
I don't know what you mean.
Well, in other words, for this project, if this isn't, let's say, I don't know, like a home run in terms of a planner, would you consider like a revise?
I don't believe that--
That's the question, isn't it?
Sustained, Mr. Simoes.
That is a question, isn't it?
No, not--
Would you consider a redesign? That's a question. Hello?
Not for--
That's not a question.
Not a question.
But he wouldn't be the one to answer that question.
Well, he's the planner.
No, he's not the designer. He's not the developer. That's a question.
No, I meant as a planner.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but, all right, you can answer.
Let him answer, let him answer.
No.
Oh, don't let him answer.
I object. Sustained.
I'm confused.
Well, wait, it sounds like we're in court now. You just sustained the objection?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then let me ask another way. If this project-- I'm trying to figure out how to ask this. Could, could you redesign this?
I must object to the question of the planner.
Sustained. He's not the designer.
Sustained question?
He's not the designer. He's the planner. He, he talks about the benefits, the positive and negative criteria of the application.
Okay. Could you replan this? I mean, are there more ways to--
I'm sorry, I don't believe that's an appropriate question.
Wait a minute, he's a planner, and I just, you said, refine the question to a planner. I said, could you replan this?
That is not the planner's job.
What does a planner do? Wait a minute, I'm asking--
The planner is here to talk about the negative and positive criteria of this application. That is why he testified.
Okay, could, could you, if necessary, increase the positive impact of this project?
I'm not sure. Could I, could I impact positive? I don't know what that means. How so? I don't want to ask you questions.
Okay, well, I don't mind.
There's an infinite number of possibilities.
It seems like either--
What happens?
Okay, okay. Here's my question. It's, doesn't it seem like to you that there's quite a few hurdles here? What I'm asking you is somehow you, working with the team, could maybe plan something with less hurdles?
This is a--
And, wait, you're going to object to that too?
Yes. I object.
Let me, is there anything I can ask that--
I'm sure that you can come up with a reasonable question that--
That wasn't reasonable?
As far as I'm concerned, I believe that you can question him based on any of his testimony.
Well, but I, I thought we honed it down to, as a planner, do you think you could increase the positive benefit compared to this plan with a different plan? I mean, is that conceivable?
I don't believe that's an appropriate question.
No, no, you're going to rule that objectionable.
Sustained, Mr. Simoes.
You know, I gave up. I did like 30 variations of the same question. Not one worked.
Can you ask a question that relates to his testimony?
What, everything I've been asking doesn't relate to the planner?
No, it does not. No, it does not.
All right, maybe I'm in the wrong ballpark here. Thank you.
Anyone else from the general public for Mr. McDonough and his testimony?
I got a question. My name is Joseph Burris, I live at 301 First Avenue. I'm just confused. Um, both lots are, are zoned R1. And today, in today's topic, you pretty much seemed like you wanted to stray away from saying that it's a rezoning by what you're proposing to do on those two lots. You seem to be more, uh, interested in getting the variances approved, which would be on something that would probably have gone through the city council, been approved already, probably the planning board, and then come to the zoning board and get tweaked. So we're jumping two steps over to get to this point, is what I think, but, um, I, I don't understand why you're...
You are confused.
I am confused?
Yeah, that's not how it works.
Okay, all right, so then I will... So it's not a rezoning, what they're asking for?
No.
You're not asking for a rezoning, you're just asking for a variance. So if this were, seventeen units were to be put on these two lots that are zoned R1, it's not a rezoning?
No.
No. They apply for variances.
I get that.
To permit what they wanna do.
Right.
And that's why they're in front of this board, because this board grants those kinds of variances.
So when the seventeen...
What we're saying is that because the, the deviation is so severe...
Right.
And, and what Mr. McDonough testified to him earlier was, you should be looking at this in qualitative, not quantitative. The numbers don't really matter, it's outfield's kind of thing. What we've pointed out is, yeah, the numbers. It's extremely different from what's permitted.
Right.
In some cases, the courts have said, when it's really different, you're basically a woven sheet closing. You're trying to do a rezoning without calling it...
That's kinda what my point was. Um, what my thought was, as far as that goes.
Right.
All right, cool.
So, so that's that.
All right, thank you.
Building height, page seventy-three.
Right, Donna, can we finish up with the public and then you win? Anyone else from the general public for Mr. McDonough? All right, I'll close public session. Thank you. Close cross-examination.
So I, I just wanna clarify the thing about the building height referenced in the waterfront redevelopment plan on page seventy-three. It's a stupid location, but under those circumstances shall a development block exceed the height depicted on the development control plan? That is the, like, one definitive statement in the entire plan. They could lose it here and just had to find it. So where the development control plan shows the building heights on various sections of the block fronts, those are, those are the one thing you cannot deviate the planning board, cannot grant variance from. You have to get a plan amendment, and, and that's what has happened in the past. So when we say it's three stories on the east side of Burr, that's what they're holding, that's what's happening, so...
And where is that?
It's to step down the height as you move into the city.
Oh, sorry. That's not part of the infill area? What, what are you reading?
Uh, it's on page seventy-three, it's buried in the, um, block controls for development, uh, it's on the redevelopment plan. So there's a map that shows the, this...
The waterfront and renovation infill area?
This doesn't apply to the renovation infill area, it only applies to the primary real area.
Which this is not in.
Which is, property is not in, but... McDonough was making the comparison to, uh, you know, it's reasonable along the fringe.
And you're saying...
And transitions, and four stories would be a fair transition. And we're saying that, well, no, even the waterfront redevelopment plan acknowledges a lower height as a part of its transition, transition before it gets out of the primary real area.
It's four there, is that not?
Uh, no, so, so the big triangle, the, right, yeah. So the big diagonal block, like diagonal bar there, that's CB Tower. No, no, no.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's CB Tower across the street is our site. And then, um, so that street is Burr, and Burr Street is the separator between the primary real area and renovation infill area. So as you look forth on those other blocks between, um, Second and Third, you'll see the numbers in the circles. Those are the maximum building heights permitted in that block, and, uh, in the extent of that...
So it's a mix of threes and fours?
So those are three stories along Burr Street. So our, again, our point is that...
Oh, you're saying fours around that?
The waterfront redevelopment plan already anticipates that building heights are transitioning down from eight stories near the waterfront to three stories before it even gets out of the primary real area. So putting a four-story building outside the primary real area is counterintuitive to what is not just recommended in the waterfront redevelopment plan, like mandated by the waterfront redevelopment plan. Thank you.
The only thing I'll point out for the board's information is that the first two circles closest to the subject site show fours in, on First Avenue. Not three.
So the first one is south, that is east of Burr.
Right, you have the, the historic buildings, there's seven or so historic buildings in the, I believe it's the Burr District. And there's a four sto, a four-story circle and another four-story circle south of that. And that's...
He's on...
Come up with whatever on the screen.
Yeah, he's looking there. He's east of Burr. He's the first.
Burr Street is the, the line delineating...
He's in the block between First and Second.
Right, opposite the twelve-story building. There's a four and a four.
Not Burr.
That's Kingsley. That's First Ave.
Yeah, but that, those sort of, if I'm in the right spot, that's, that section there.
It's heck.
That's Kingsley and First is not correct.
That's whatever's between Kingsley and Burr. I don't know what the...
There is no King, there is no street between Kingsley and Burr. The muse has been taken out. If that's the muse, that's been removed.
All right, that's showing more as a pedestrian lane or prominent area.
No, it's not there, that doesn't exist.
All I'm saying, even if it were for three-story, that this is a reasonable step-down, the applicant is asking, let's say, one additional street. The applicant's asking for relief. So the applicant is allowed to ask for relief, and this is not at a reasonable reach. That's all I'm saying.
We appreciate that, thank you, Mr. McDonough. All right.
What's next?
Uh, I guess we're up to your closing comments at this point.
Why your public comment first?
Oh, do we get that first to be first? Okay. All right, then we'll open it up to comment from the general public. Yes.
Anything else? Don't get too crazy.
Please, please be brief.
Yeah, and so you've got me sworn, because you're actually just fine, so...
Christian Hubert, 401 First Avenue. Can you spell your listing? H-U-B-E-R-T. Uh, I'll make it very brief. Uh, I just wanna paint a picture of the current conditions, I know they kind of rushed on when I'm talking about what it's like to live in a neighborhood.
Can you, can you...
Sure. Just wanna point out, you know, the current conditions of the neighborhood, what it's like to live over there. I live across the street, the diagonal block, Library Square Park there. The, uh, the screaming, yelling, and laughing throughout the night, it's getting old. I've dealt with it for years now, we all have. Um, the police were there two, a hundred and seventy-two times in 2017. The fire department first aids there almost every day. Uh, I saw a body get taken out about two weeks ago while there was kids playing in the park across the street. Uh, I've witnessed at least three fistfights between residents in front of my house. Um, I deal with constant aggressive panhandling from all the residents. I'm, I'm tired of coming home from work and having undercover police cars on the side of my house watching the activity at the building. There's constant drug activity and prostitution throughout the night over there, we can all agree on that. Um, currently, there's five Megan's Law offenders living in that building. Um, it, it's a little unsettling when you have kids at Library Square Park from the charter schools playing over there. Kids out there, and there's men who live in that house hanging out in the park all day. Uh, I deal with residents drinking in front of my house all the time. Um, I saw a woman walk into the Del Monte one time, walk out there, sit on a bench across the street from me, inject herself with something, and go unconscious. Um, I've had residents expose themselves in front of my house many a times. At least, I can count at least five times right in front of my house to urinate and do other things. Um, I've had dozens of packages stolen from my house to the point where I can't have anything sent to my house anymore. I followed a resident back into the Del Monte after they stole my property. Um, I've had two attempted break-ins by residents, and I've had one successful break-in by a resident who walked into my front door while I was home, uh, asking if I had rooms for rent, because she didn't like the conditions at the Del Monte. Um, and also, according to the African Park Press, back in March 2017, the grossest place to live in Asbury Park. So I just wanna brush, I just wanna expand on what the planner said of what the conditions are in that neighborhood. It, it's disgusting, it's unacceptable, it's unlivable. I've lived in my house now for three years, and I really don't wanna live anymore because of what I deal with on a regular basis. It's a beautiful house across from you from a beautiful park with beautiful homes in the neighborhood, wonderful neighborhood, neighbors, except for that building. And the last point I wanna make is that Asbury Park put a, um, a law in place that kind of restricted Airbnb-type properties in town. To restrict the transient people coming and going, you know, you don't know who's next door to you. Well, I got fifty-two rooms across the street that I don't know who lives across the street. And you have people coming in all the time. I've had at least two different people knock on my door asking for rooms for rent, because they come from the train, they have their bags, they don't know where to go. It's a magnet, and I think any police officer in town can talk about how awful it is, you know, dealing with the people over there. So I wanna put that out there, I want you guys to understand what, what, what's up at stake here. I'm not saying this is the best solution in the universe, but something needs to be done before. And you also had a boarding house over, I believe, on Seventh Avenue where there was a police-involved shooting where someone was killed. Boarding houses, rooming houses, they have no place in this town anymore. Town's changed for the better. And, and if we have to keep dealing with these types of properties, you're gonna keep having potential shootings, drug dealings, and prostitution. And it, it goes on all the time. Any of you guys are welcome, consider my from Port Chay, time and watch. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the general public for comment?
Uh, my name's Roland Rome, I live at 223 First Avenue, which is diagonal from the Hotel Del Monte. Yes. So we've been in the house for seven years now. We've seen a lot of stuff happen at, at the Del Monte. Uh, as, as much of an eyesore as it is, I, I don't want it gone at all costs. Uh, this proposal is, is what I feel is a building that just doesn't fit the neighborhood. With regards to what goes on in the neighborhood because of this building, it's not just because of this building. We deal with stuff from Porta. We know during the summer, I'm gonna find drunks in my front yard. We bought where we bought it. It is what it is. The current residents in that house, they have a guy with a Jaguar that likes to play his music extremely loud. My wife went and talked to him like a human being and said, could you please turn your music down so I could listen to my music on the porch? And he said, thank you for not calling the police, I'll turn my music down. Sure, there's bad seeds there, but for the most part, when I walk my dogs, people tell me hello, I tell them hello back. I haven't had any issues with people on my porch. So it's, I'm not, I'm not saying that it hasn't happened, because I talk to Christian all the time. We're neighbors. He wants it gone at all costs, I don't. So I'm against this project, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the general public?
Yes, I'm Joseph Burris, 301 First Avenue. I don't want this building gone at all costs. I bought here, we had eight hookers on the corner, we had needles in the street, condoms in the street. We knew what we bought into. We bought here in 2005. We moved into their neighborhood, and the neighborhood's gentifying. So I don't have problems with people across the street. I put landscaping up, I put fences around my yard, I got cameras on my house, I got two dogs that'll bite, you know? And that's just the way life is. But I've had no one ever try to break into my house. No one ever tried to steal anything. Sometimes somebody will drop somebody off and think that that's, you know, you know, it's a Del Monte, uh, resort. But at any rate, uh, we get their mail. We don't have a problem with it. Yeah, they're a little bit noisy on the porch and everything. Um, do, does anybody wanna live next door to some of the people that come in and out of there over the last ten or twelve years? No, but they gotta live somewhere. I don't want it to gone at all costs. I don't want that building hoovering over my house. I just don't want it. There's five stories according to the way I feel that building is with a rooftop. I don't want those people staring down with balconies at the front of my house. And I didn't want the original plan with the driveways and the garage doors facing my house going up and down the front of my house all day and night with twenty-seven cars coming in and out of there. I don't want to fight the people on the street for the parking, even though they say there's adequate parking there. They're gonna have guests, we're two blocks from the beach, it's bad enough in the summer as it is. From a real estate perspective, I'm a Realtor for twenty-five years. I gotta tell you, there's a lot on Second Avenue that Pat Passano put up with a developer for 1.5, the same exact fifty by a hundred. My neighbor next door on Burr Avenue, they went over there, they made a deal with them, they're building a 1.3 million dollar house on the same-sized lot. So it's not like these lots can't be sold. Asbury's hot right now. It's maybe because they want too much money for the lot, maybe the developers wanna make too much money. It's not about bashing anybody here, it's just the way it is. I think if these properties were marketed properly at the right price, we could do the same thing that they did right there. And I don't think that we should have to live across the street from a building like that when they're, they're zoned R1.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I do. John Nash, 301 First Avenue. So I'm, I'm not in favor of this project either. The, the size of it is just, doesn't conform with the neighborhood. I think it's gonna set a precedent for other lots like this in this zone on the east or west side of Burr, Burr Street. So I don't wanna see this happen. There's plenty of other places in town where a project like this would fit in perfectly. Like I said, the metropolitan lot is a great lot, go ahead and develop that one. We'd love to have that developed. Um, but I just don't feel the project in its current height would fit well. There's no reason why they can't build something like The Vibe with four townhomes next to each other on that same property and make 1.2 million dollars per townhome for the, instead of the, instead of per lot if that would get through the zoning. But I just think this is way overused for what it's zoned for.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Anyone else from the public?
Yes, I do. Warner Baumgartner, uh, city historian. The problems of the existing use there have been testified to by the public. Those problems do not justify violating the zoning to create a new development, to get rid of those problems. You can get rid of those problems by developing this site in accordance with the zoning and not asking for variances. I'd like to introduce the concept of a street wall. Perhaps some of you have heard of what a street wall is, maybe some of you haven't. But it's the alignment of the structures, um, parallel to the road. Um, in many communities like Tinton Falls or Ocean Township, there is no consistency in the alignment of buildings. Properties are helter-skelter, they're twenty-five feet back from the road, they're fifty feet, they're ten feet. You know, that's a typical residential neighborhood that many of us are familiar with. Tinton Falls, Ocean Township. Asbury Park is unique. It was designed over a hundred years ago, 1871. The concept of a consistent street wall with a twenty-five-foot setback has existed in Asbury Park since 1871. I see a very disturbing and dangerous trend evolving in the last couple of months of violating the setbacks and building buildings closer to the street than those adjacent to them. What this does is it impairs the historic character of Asbury Park. Now, you may ask, well, so what? The building is closer. Well, the city in its own master planning documents has documented at great length the value of preserving the historic character of Asbury Park. And it's specifically stated that one of the greatest design features of Asbury Park is the city plan. Part and parcel of the city plan is consistent setbacks and the alignment of properties along the block to a consistent street wall. Now, certainly you can have some variations due to hardship. A foot or two one way or the other, right, is not gonna make or break the visual appearance of a neighborhood. But twenty feet? What's being asked for is a twenty-foot difference on that block face between the church next door and this building. That's excessive. That is a visual intrusion in the public's rights... That is a visual intrusion in the public's rights to green space and open air. And that is what those view corridors are. They're essentially linear public parks. The right-of-ways were testified to by the professionals. Yes, Asbury Park streets are enormously wide right-of-ways. And the setbacks are extraordinarily large at 25 feet. This is intentional and creates the entire psychological look and feel of Asbury Park. Changing that alters how Asbury Park is perceived psychologically, the beauty of it, the consistency of it. All right? So that's an introduction to that concept. There was some question about, you know, there not being a historic commission. Unfortunately, there isn't. There is no historic commission in Asbury Park. However, there are historic districts designated. One of them, at the highest level, is a state-designated district called the Turn-of-the-Century Historic District. This property resides in that. That district acknowledges this concept of consistent setbacks, consistent architecture of front yard porches, and the look and feel that's desired and encouraged in the city master plan to be developed. Now, is there any regulatory teeth to that? Absolutely not. But it's a point of information, that the state itself acknowledges that there is a significant architectural and historic character worth preserving. That's something you need to take into consideration. At the county level, this is designated as the Library Square Historic District for exactly the same reasons. The city plan, consistent setbacks, porches, an architectural consistency which is desirable according to the city plan. So, it comes down to, locally, what can you do? Well, the way New Jersey works is it's a home-rule state. Municipalities have more power than the state in many cases. This is one of those situations. Zoning. Zoning of this area being R1 and having design regulations approved in the zoning regulations designates this as a historic district for local zoning purposes, for architectural design standards. That is enforceable, fully enforceable by you and by the zoning office. To violate that violates not only the state recommendations, the county recommendations, the recommendations of the city's own master plan. So, it comes down to you holding all the power and the city zoning office holding all the power over whether anybody cares about preserving Asbury Park's history. If you allow encroachments, if you allow architectural deviations, you're not doing what's in the best interests of realizing Asbury's master plan and the potential to preserve the historic character. Now, this building, let's talk about this building specifically. It's simply way too big. Way too big. This could easily be modified at probably a profit loss to the developer, and you can't, you can't fault the developer for asking for the world, right? It's their mission, right? Their mission to ask for as much as possible. But it's also your mission to pare things down and say, "Hey, you know, what's better for Asbury Park?" To force this to have a 25-foot setback would be immensely beneficial, even beyond the architectural standards. The street wall and the setbacks are the primary character-defining feature of all of the east-side neighborhoods, everything east of Main Street. Secondary to that is the architecture. So, I'm going to say this is a really nice project. It's a great architectural design for Tinton Falls, for Ocean Township, but not for this zone and these overlays that exist in this district and the zoning regulations in Asbury Park. I would love to see this designed as a smaller-scale project on both lots with a large front porch, a common front porch to all the residents, common, like a common roof amenity. That would be appropriate historically, and it would be a very socially interesting thing to have a large, common front porch, like a old hotel normally has, right? With individual units inside. That's the kind of development that should be put here. The problem with this is there's no interaction with the public on the street level. All you have is louvers, bare louvers around the entire property, looking into a parking garage. That is not the character of Asbury Park or of this neighborhood. Covering that up with something more useful would be really good. I would love to see the developer really do something special here to fit in. So, that's my recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Anyone else from the general public?
Please, please swear your testimony during these proceedings will be the two of the two, then nothing but the two?
I do. Ernest Manoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Now, it doesn't have to be a question, right?
No.
Isn't that great? I want to start by saying I think public participation here is critical. I sit through a lot of these meetings where there aren't two, three, four, or five residents and people involved. I don't know what the issue is, maybe it's in how people are notified or re-notified. I know when we started here, they said this application was a year old, and I'm wondering if we're relying on the same year-old 200-foot notification? Because in between a year, a lot of people move, and they weren't originally notified. And there have been other projects now that have been quite objectionable relative to setback, relative to historic, where somehow, there wasn't enough public there and the projects got approved. Now, I think, and I'm talking about a grand street, 1,000 grand, I think it's going to go on appeal. Because once you start granting these, what do you call them, set for, you do away with the setback, that is so critical to Asbury Park. And yet, when a board feels like, "Well, look, the presentation was great, the developer's lawyer is great," and yet, in the final analysis, you put something in that doesn't fit, it encroaches on these visual and these air passages that are, why we call it Asbury Park, I think that we're not really represented by the board or the city. And what do I mean by that? Often, when we come here, it always seems like there's an antagonism between homeowners, residents full-time like us, and the board, who seems to have their own view. But then we ask, "Well, wait a minute. Aren't you supposed to consider our view more than your view? You're like, what, seven, eight people? There's 15,000 of us living here. And why is it that it seems like we're always kind of either overpowered or shut down or whatever? I don't get that part." So what am I saying? I think that sometimes when I hear certain people on the board ask very, very good and logical questions, like something's too big, and then all of a sudden, the town engineers, the attorney jumps in, you all jump in, say, "Oh, well, you know, you really have to understand, times are changing and, you know, we really have a problem with that property, so let's go with this." But that's not the way it should be. Someone on a board shouldn't feel like, "I gotta go with what most people are voting." So, what do I mean? I think in these zoning and planning and all these boards, there should be a lot more no votes. And why? Because if there are more no votes, the projects that come before you will be better projects, they'll be with setbacks, they'll fit in, they'll blend. I think there's certain precedents that have been set in the city already, not just with R1, but with commercial projects where, I just don't get it. Like, we're putting 35 apartments above 15 retail stores with no parking. Well, it doesn't matter because we're going to pay $3,000 or $17,000 penalty to the city. Well, the city said, "Well, it's money to come in." But then look what you have, no parking. And it's just, I tend to agree with anyone that said that the negative issues of this property do not warrant the approval of something that doesn't fit to replace it. And I think, when I was questioning, that there is no question in my mind, the architect, the developer could come back with something that looks like it grew there. And I would hope that that's what you expect. I would hope that you, in this presentation, that this is declined and that something comes back that doesn't require variances, that's setback, and that when you ride by, it looks like, again, it grew there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manoli. Anyone else from the general public? All right, I'll close the public session. Mr. Samo is your final statements.
Good evening, again.
Good evening. We've come a long ways.
We have come a long way. And thanks for your attention. I believe that you were an involved body. I appeared before many boards, and I believe that you are familiar with this application probably as much as I am. You heard all of the testimony, you reviewed your planners' reports, your engineers' reports. But I believe that this application is a good application. I believe that this is not the ideal application. And to be honest with you, you know, my client does not have to bring you the ideal application. But it is an application that we believe is appropriate for this site. As my planner testified, we are in a corner between a church in the street and where there are 52 rooms, and we are proposing 17 apartments. I believe that you cannot let that escape your view of this application. I believe that you have to take into account that we have been here, as you recall, I believe, four times, and we have scaled this application down substantially. We believe that what we have presented here, if you consider not only the numbers, but what we are proposing here, we do not believe that this is detrimental. We believe that this is positive for that street. I understand that this is a R1, that's why we're here. But it is at the end of this zone, and I believe that by being in the corner is totally different than if it was in the middle of the street. I believe that you have to use common sense and believe and consider that this is a transitional location. And what, you have to consider what we have there. We have to consider that what's there is not going to go away. No application has been made for that location. Why? Because no one, no one has the capacity to do what you could do as an R1, 2-1 family house. So, we believe that what we've submitted is a good application, we believe that this does not break the pattern, like some of the public have mentioned, because it isn't, this is not a member of the street. And if you consider what's there today, that is an eyesore. You may, if you appreciate what we are proposing here, you have to consider what's there is 20 times worse. Not only the having 50 odd rooms, but also the unsightly version of that building. So, based on that, considering the testimony that my planner has presented, and how we have scaled down the project, we believe that this is an appropriate application and diastate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samo. So we come to the board decision. It's been a long process. I appreciate all the testimony and the public's comments and questions. Personally, I think, and I'm going to ask for everyone else's opinion as well, I think the overall density and size and just the fact that it's taking over most of this particular 10,000 square feet is just above and beyond this site. I think it's all being done primarily as a profit situation for the development. Of course, they already testified that in order to make it profitable, it had to be this size. I personally think it's too much. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I also think it is important to maintain the zoning of this particular site, and that is our particular job to do.
I wanted to ask Donna a question before I go on my point. Do you have the waterfront plan in front of you?
I can get it.
Okay. Can you just say what the purpose of that zone is, generally?
The renovation infill zone?
Yes. Sorry, if I had internet, I would look at it myself, but... Someone else can go, like, she looks fine.
I concur, Chris. And I think that, in particular, the problem for me comes from the fact that the ask is so much greater than what is permitted and what exists, regardless of the current conditions, which we can argue about the desirability of that. It's not our job as the zoning board to decide whether the existing use is right. We are here to consider the proposed use. That's my first point. The proposed use, however, is not particularly designed to suit this site. It's a 100-by-100-foot lot, it's not very large, it would allow a half an FAR in its existing, without any variances. And we are asking for six times more than that, which creates all of the other variances that are being asked for. The height, the setback, the bulk, the parking, the design requirements, the porch, the historicals, it all stems from the magnitude of the ask. And I don't think that we have the power to simply brush aside the zoning that has been affirmed time and time again by the planning board and by the city council for this particular site to...
And to add a second point to that, there is a second, there is an avenue for you to take, Mr. Samo, by going to the council and proposing your application and development about this particular site to the council, and then taking an appropriate avenue with the planning board. I do not feel that this is the right board for you.
And to sort of just bring it home there is to say that our job is to provide relief from some hardship or some special situation that I don't feel has been demonstrated in either the negative or the positive criteria argued by the planner and subsequently by Mr. Samo. Therefore, I have not had supported this application.
Anyone else from the board?
We have a big answer to the session's question. So, the waterfront redevelopment area is renovation infill area. Basically anticipates renovation of existing buildings and infill with new construction where appropriate, in accordance with the planning and design principles, which are those criteria for, you know, maintaining the block front, similar architecture...
So all the design...
Design, all the...
Variances that they're asking for, essentially.
Well, except that, yes and no. Because in the waterfront redevelopment plan, there are more looser guidelines, in a sense, but also stricter relating to the actual materials and things, but that's only the primary renewal area. When you're in the renovation infill area, then you use the regular zoning ordinance as community design guidelines, those are the ones that are in the bringing in.
Okay. Dan, did you want to go?
Yeah, sure. I go back to that block I used to live, 508, 40 years ago when my daughter was born. And I liked that neighborhood. And I tend to agree with the, most of the people who stood up, they liked that neighborhood too. I remember walking in the park, we're pushing the floor in that neighborhood. The magnitude of what you're asking for, for that neighborhood, is just too much. I agree with the people who live over there, that is their neighborhood, and they have a right to be comfortable in their neighborhood. The second thing that I did has pretty much turned me off is the parking and the inability to be able to explain the mechanical parking that's there. Those systems do break down. And they require 24-hour maintenance because if one breaks down and somebody's trying to go to work, they're not going to get to work. Therefore, you are basically, due to your lack of preparation to present it to us, where you could have presented us with a lift, and I know totally about those lifts, you're actually not even preparing to come to us, which tells us how it can be maintenance, how it can be taken care of. You've also done an injustice to the people who would be buying those, buying those properties, and having that break down on them and say, "Well, you can wait a couple days..." and having that break down on them and say, well, you can wait a couple of days until somebody gets out to fix it. So just based on that alone, I cannot agree with building that there. Thank you.
I have listened to the developer and also the neighbors. It's not that the neighbors don't want you to build in there. They want a change. Because the building that is right now there is an ISO, yes. But they don't want it as big as what is proposed right now. I think it violates the privacy and their space. Then I listen to the neighbors and what basically they're saying, they want change, yes, but not at that scale. So for that reason, I would say no.
Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, I would support what's been said mostly by Chris and Eric. That, I, big picture, back, take a step back here. I don't think that this advances the purpose of this zone at all. I actually think it doesn't respect anything about it. The biggest things that I have a concern about is the 81% building coverage, where only 25% is allowed. I don't know where all that stormwater is going to go. I don't remember from a year ago, but I'm pretty sure that no site can accommodate that amount of water. The front backs, front setbacks, I also, four to five feet is not something that I think that the zone is predicting. Building height, I support the, what we concluded in the waterfront plan, that four stories, three stories is trying to get further as you get move away from the waterfront. But my biggest issue is with the FAR. .5 is what's allowed. 3.0 is what they're proposing, which is five times greater than what's proposed in that district. They've come back here, what, now, four times? And they have not made a change at all. I mean, yes, they did, it was maybe four to three, but still, it's way over what's allowed. At that point, what's the point of even having an FAR in the zoning code? This not only doesn't advance zoning, I think it, defies it.
I agree that it does.
I do as well, Chris.
Have the potential to substantially harm the power of the city to make land use decisions and have our board review them.
Yes. And if that's not worse enough, that's only one part of it. The other part is there's no hardship in my mind that's been proven. This is a normal-sized lot for this zone that they could, they could do something there that is a thin zoning. So I strongly am against this case.
Thank you.
That's my opinion.
Anyone else from the board?
Well, I would like just to say that I agree with what the other board members have said. But I also want to say to the public, thank you for your comments. I value them, and I appreciate you.
So based on all my board members' comments, I'm going to make a motion to deny the application.
Second.
If I may, I'll give you a simple procedure. Since the applicant is basically, as for the planner, lumped up the use variances together, you've got use bulk and design waivers, but if the case fails for bringing of use variance to bulk and design waivers, because without the use, you can't get those. So for that reason, you know, make your vote on your, on the whole package, but at the top, of course, your D variances.
So just to reiterate...
Yeah, it makes sense.
I agree with you.
So they normally always ask for motion to approve, but in this case, obviously, from the comments, we're not going to get that. So Christopher, just go right ahead with your motion to...
Deny the application.
Yeah, variances, site plan.
Variances, site plan, D variances.
I'll second it.
Daniel Harris?
Yes. No.
It's a yes, it's a negative vote. So a yes or a no.
Yes is for a no. Got it. No, I was confused.
No, I get it. No, I mean, yes, we're always used to going the other way. Yes, that's okay.
Eric Gallo.
Yes.
Brittany Ashen.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Christopher Gonzalez.
Yes.
Tim Blake.
Yes.
Christopher Avaloni.
Yes.
Application denied.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Wait, no, no. Dan, would you, before we adjourn, I would like just to review the calendar arena. Yes, if you have a piece to look at at all, Dan. Do you have any objections to any?
I'm sorry, I'm going to do that. You have some specific specifications?
All right, arena, Dan has no objections to the calendar?
Dan, you're on cue.
So if you could just, if you could just follow up with Russell?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, if he has no objections, then go ahead and submit it to...
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I second.